February 27, 2024, meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen being held in Harry Butters Selectmen's Chambers at the Norwood Town Hall. As always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, it's good to see everybody. And we got a pretty full agenda, so we'll get right to it. First item on the agenda is a warrant signature update, submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative. You have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Crowe, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous. That brings us to our first appointment. And we have Nick Brewer, who will be presenting his Eagle Scout project. Nick is a member of Boy Scout Troop 49 in Norwood, presenting to the board information regarding the potential project for the Meadow Street Bridge. Nick, welcome. The floor is yours, young man. It's great to have you here.
Thank you. So as stated before, this is an Eagle Scout project, a bridge on Meadow Street. All right. Who am I? Well, I'm Nicholas Brewer. I'm 16, and I am part of Troop 49 Norwood. I'm currently working on Eagle Scout, which is the highest rank in scouting. And this details that I completed Eagle Scout project. What is this project? So this project will consist of building a footbridge over a normally flooded section of trail here in Norwood. Where is this located? The trail is located at the end of Meadow Street, right below the Norwood Airport, and on the border with Canton. So as you can see up there, it's like kind of near Napauntet Street. And on those two photos up there, the left one is, was taken on June 14, 2023, and that was when the river gauge was recorded at 7.5 feet. And the photo on the right was taken January 1 of this year, and the river level was 11.25 feet. So it could fluctuate a lot with whenever it rains. And in these pictures, you can't see it, but the Napauntet River is just to the right of where this plank is, which is where the bridge would be built. All right, so the timeline. When I would like to start this pro, start and finish the construction of the site during April vacation week, the 13th to the 21st, that will provide enough time to get permissions and fundraise for the project and prepare the materials needed. More exact location, this picture up here was taken January 1. The orange is like the main trail of, of the Meadow Street Trail System. And the green was the parts that I filled in because it was either too flooded that day for me to be able to walk to it. And the yellow circle is where the bridge will be placed. How we build it. So I've been working very closely with Jerry Hopcroft, an engineer. He has helped a lot to plan the, the design of the bridge. So the bridge will be 16 feet long, using two 16-foot stringers, which is where the planks are placed on top of. And each of those would be placed on the two sleepers, which would be buried on each side of the trench about level with the ground. And each of those sleepers will have rebar driven into them, so the bridge won't move whenever it floods. And we would pre-cut most, if not all, of the wood before the construction with the help of Mr. Phillips, who's a former scout leader of Troop 49. And we will most likely be bringing out the materials with the help of Mr. Kowski and his tractor. And if you don't know Mr. Kowski, he owns Zakovsky Farm adjacent to the Meadow Street property. And this is just a, just a brief picture of the design that Mr. Hopcroft drew up. Materials and people involved. So the total material cost will probably be a little higher than on this list, to take into account things you might have missed. And the town will not have to pay for this. As a part of the Eagle project, you have to fundraise. So I will be doing that myself with my troop. And the scouts, troop leaders, friends of my family will be working with me on the, on the project, as well as some other people that might be helping from different parts of the town.
You're doing great, Nick.
Permissions and the environment. So permits, I have reached out to Gary Pelletier, the building inspector, and he determined that a building permit is not required for this bridge. The land, I've been working with the Conservation Commission, and I'm working with them to get the permissions needed also. And speaking of that, I'm going to the meeting tomorrow night, and will be speaking to them about that. And so basically the final approval is with the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission. And one of the big things of building this bridge is the environmental impact. And so the only thing that will be altering the grounds around the bridge are the two sleepers, which are not going to be directly in the river or the trench. They'll be off to the sides. Then so it will be minimal impact on the water. That is all, I believe. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Nick.
Any questions?
Yeah, so we'll open it up to the rest of the board for questions or comments. I'm gonna steal from them first, but I'm just gonna ask, what made you want to do this project?
Well, I originally was because I was just looking for trails in Norwood, because I just got my mountain bike. So I was just interested in going around the trails. And I found this trail, and I realized that, well, there are a lot of areas that get muddy or flooded a lot of the time. So why not build a bridge there?
That's a good reason. Great. Questions, comments from the board. Mr. Sad?
Forty-nine, you could be the 49th president of the United States. Way you're going. Congratulations. Keep it up. The only thing I want to tell you is don't let Mr. Kowski use a chainsaw. If he's watching, he knows that and seldom know what he did down the horse pool area. Congratulations. I'll be willing to donate, so hit us up. And great job, great project. Thank you. This is their security team behind you, huh? So congratulations and good job. Every Eagle Scout is special in Norwood, especially around the world. The volunteer is the greatest work of life. So you'll appreciate that, Tom Rowan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chad. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to congratulate you. I've had many relatives and uncles that have been Eagle Scouts over the years, and it's always such a great moment in their life. And so I'm, I'm just really pleased to see you going for it. And just, I think you're doing a great job. Presentation was very, very well done. It included all the types of details that I would be wanting to know. You've managed to answer pretty much all of my questions in terms of, you know, permissions that you already obtained, dimensions, design. Long term, once the bridge is in, is the, how would the maintenance on it work?
Well, that was one of the points, because with the Eagle project is you don't, it's not supposed to be something that's long term. You're, you're not going to be doing the maintenance on it. So the goal is to not have that much maintenance on it. Maybe if something, unless something gets broken, of course. But in terms of my project, I wouldn't be doing maintenance on it. That would be helping the Trails Committee, who would help put that out with that.
Excellent. I believe that was all the questions I had.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm accustomed to your initiative and your preparation and your presentation, but I have to make sure one thing is okay. You sure using Mr. Kowski's tractor isn't cheating?
That's allowed?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Good.
Speed up, Mr. Kowski.
Thank you, Ms. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly?
Very good presentation, Nick. I had the opportunity on Sunday to join with the Trails Committee on a hike on Meadow Street Trails. And Nick, his dad, and brother Josh were with us. And we got to the side of the bridge, and it had to be about 15 of us there. And Josh just gave a very thorough review of what the, what the project was. Actually, we're gonna be, you're gonna be replacing what I call the, the mat lane plank that now spans over that, that particular stream. And, and I just want to also make a point that, that you've got a really good partner in Mr. Hopcroft. If people don't know, Mr. Hopcroft is a, is a retired civil engineer who has tons of experience with bridges. And I know that, just a shout out to the Trails Committee, getting out to that trail, the trail itself, for the Trails Committee was in really good shape. And it's a credit to the volunteers on the Trails Committee who have gotten out there in the dead of winter to, to keep that, that street, that, that particular trail well maintained. It was wide open. Many of the brush and obstacles that you would normally might find in a trail were cleared out effectively by, by the team. So the partnership here between you, Mr. Mr. Hopcroft, and the Trails Committee is just, just, the stars are aligned. So I thank you for the opportunity to get an onsite review of the project, and I wish you luck.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. While we have some Trails Advisory Committee folks here, is there anything that you'd like to add that may not have been said already? Mr. Greeley or Mr. Pelletier?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chair, what Nick, what Nick didn't present at the very beginning was the fact that this was his idea. He's, he's actually a neighbor of Meadow Street, the Meadow Street area. And he's, he's probably spent more time on the trail than the rest of us have.
Wow.
Very, very personable. He's definitely, you know, does act together. He came to us with the, with the idea. We're really looking forward to working for him and with him on this project.
That's great. Excellent. Mr. Pelletier?
The only thing I could, could add is, Ms. Crowe's question about maintenance. The, Mr. Hopcroft looked as, as part of his parts list in some way, because he's also advising us on other water crossings that we're proposing. And I believe he's got like a 10 to 15-year expected lifespan on the bridge. So, you know, we've got plenty of time to, down the road, maybe, you know, go for grants when it's, when it's time to replace those bridges in the future.
Find another Eagle Scout, it can't be?
What's that?
Find another Eagle Scout.
There we go, another Eagle Scout.
Yeah, play a little question.
So, but yeah, we've got a good 10 years and maybe 15 that we should get out of this bridge before we would need to be thinking about replacing it, so.
That's great. Nick, anything else for us?
No, I think that's it.
Good. Do we need a formal vote to accept the project?
Make a motion to su, I'm sorry.
Just one point of information, and on golf courses, the golf carts go over them, and they put a four by four along the edge, right and left edge, outside edge, to keep some kids riding bikes from going over. But just FYI.
Yep.
And they last a lifetime on the golf course.
Mr. Donnelly?
I'll make a motion that was selected to support the, the project as submitted by, by Nick Brewer.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly to support the Eagle Scout project as presented by Mr. Nick Brewer. Made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous. All right, Nick. Good luck. I'm sure it's gonna be great. Maybe you could send us some pictures when it's done?
Yep.
That'd be awesome. Good luck tomorrow night at your Concom meeting. I'm sure that'll go smoothly, too.
Maybe we can have a christening and invite the wolf.
That's awesome. That's great.
Give Mr. Delaney his plank back.
Excellent. Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Take care. See you, gentlemen. Okay, we do have a few appointments throughout the next hour-ish. But the next appointment at 6:45, our facilities director and assistant director had to reschedule. They weren't able to be here. So we'll catch them another time?
Yep. We will. Mr. Recardi is under the weather this evening, unfortunately.
Yep.
We do have Mark Raymond from the airport here. I don't know if Mark, Ron, the chairman of the committee is here, but if you want to have Mr. Raymond, he can probably get through, or the board can start taking some.
Do a little flip flop, is that okay?
Yeah, that's my thought. You can.
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, I think you should be able.
Mr. Raymond?
Yeah, follow.
Okay. We can, yeah, it looks like some of our new business, 31 through 2, Common Vic.
He's ready and willing.
Oh, wow. All right. Okay. Good evening.
Leo?
Good. Thank you for being here, Mr. Raymond. So that's okay that, do this without Mr. Raymond? Great. Okay. Thank you for being early, for taking Mr. Recardi's place, so.
That's no problem.
I mean, you get out of here earlier. That's great. So the floor is yours, Ms. Raymond, and whenever you are ready.
Guess we can start with that handout. At last week's Airport Commission meeting, the commission voted to increase the landing fees at the airport.
Same thing.
We went up 20%. On the second page is a comparison from what they were to what they are now, bringing a little more revenue to the airport.
Okay. Now, in terms of a vote, is, of?
It's just the Airport Commission's attraction does.
Correct. Okay, great.
Mark, when was the last time you raised fees?
We first implemented the landing fees in 2018, and they haven't been raised since. It was just, it was kind of coincidental. I had to do a consumer price index calculation for one of our leaseholds at the airport over the past five years. And that's kind of, my recommendation was based on that, because that came out to be, I think it was 18 and a quarter percent. So we just rounded it up.
Excellent. And Mr. Chairman of the board, this is an example of some of the fees that, we'd like to raise them annually, but we have a small fee, trying to go up 2% on our $15 fee every year, starts to come up with odd fee numbers. So the smaller fee amounts tend to end up getting raised, if there's no other escalator like a railing fee. They tend to get raised every four or five years. So it looks like it's a large jump, but it's just the practicality of trying to go up 2% a year on an $18 fee.
Okay. And Mr. Raymond, do you feel as if these rate changes will affect any of the, the traffic?
I don't believe so. It's, it's, you know, it, we start at, you know, we use the maximum takeoff weight of aircraft. And most of the smaller airplanes aren't even affected by this. We don't collect landing fees for the smaller. This is for, geared towards the bigger aircraft, the corporate aircraft.
For, for someone not super familiar, a 30,000-pound aircraft, what is that in terms of, how often are we getting planes that big?
We generally don't get a lot of aircraft that big. I would say somewhere as, you know, in the middle of the road there, you know, probably eight, eight to 15,000 for the corporate type stuff. Yeah.
Great. On this piece here, is there anything else? Mr. Sad?
Just a question. I'm new at this. When, the little, the little planes, with all the flights going back and forth, do they have to have a minimum of so much amount landing and taking off? Is that part of this equation or no?
No, no. No, we don't. This is strictly for transient aircraft. This isn't, this isn't for the flight school aircraft that are based at the airport.
Okay. All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
This is only for people that come to visit us.
The big wheels?
Yeah.
Okay. What's Taylor Swift pay when she comes in here?
I have no idea about that. I don't, I don't recall what she flew in on the last time.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully she can afford to pay the bills.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And in addition to that, this year, we're gonna reconstruct runway 10 to 8. We were supposed to do that project back in the fall, but it became, you know, too late in the year. There's always an issue with anything that has to do with asphalt. And, you know, when it gets below a certain temperature, you know, we, we, we have to go by FAA specifications with the asphalt. So it's, it's really critical that, you know, we do it the right time of year. So we postponed it. It's gonna start on March 18, which is a couple of weeks away. It's gonna run eight to 12 weeks. And the runway will be out of service during that time, but it won't affect the other runway. So it'll, the folks up in Winfield Street and Rock Street are gonna get a little break for a while.
Okay.
Although, not to change gears, but I did speak with one of the residents up there recently. And they said it's, it's, it hasn't been a problem lately with the, with the noise. It's, it's, but of course, wintertime, there's not the same amount of flight training, so.
But I know that you've been doing a lot of messaging, and so hopefully that's a big reason why it's maybe the way it is. So that's good to hear. That's great. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. Raymond, for the report. Just back to the landing fee structure, it's just more informational. This is a topic that's near and dear to my heart, because when I was on the FinCom, we actually made the formal recommendation to establish a fee for landing in 2018. And it's been a very nice revenue provider for the airport. I do track this, less so now that I'm on this board, but in the FinCom, I would do it annually. And the fee itself generates about anywhere between 30 and 40, or upwards of $40,000 a year. And just so people understand, revenue and expenses at the airport, we probably need to update it for the latest fiscal year. But in fiscal year '22, the surplus generated by the airport was in the vicinity of over 150,000, I think more like 180,000. So those fees are very helpful in terms of making sure that the airport is in, most years, self-sufficient in terms of the revenue you derive from fees, flowage, fuel taxes, short-term, long-term leases, generate enough revenue to, to, for the operations in most every year. So that's just a point of information. When we do the, the next time the fee is done or look at, I'm wondering if it might be some benefit to, just to see, we may have a list of comparable airports that to us?
I actually did that.
You do have.
On this one. And, you know, Norwood is comparable to Lawrence, Beverly, and Plymouth, size-wise and operation-wise. But I've also found, too, that, you know, airports like people around, and two of them that are like, they all, they all have different fee structures. And like, for instance, somebody had questioned why our fees were lower than Plymouth. But Plymouth supports, I believe it's either six or seven full-time employees and three part-time employees. They sell fuel. It's a different operation down there, whereas we don't sell fuel, and we only have, you know, there's one other person on staff. So, so, you know, it's, it's kind of tough sometimes to compare, you know, the different airports. But we did, I did look into that.
I'm glad you checked. That, that was, because I know that that's what we did in 2018. I'm just glad that.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I can, I can send you all that information if you wish. I do have that.
That's okay. All right. No, I have no, no further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything else for the board?
Just, just one other quick thing. Wings and Wheels. This will be our fourth year. That's gonna be on May 18, from 9 to 11 a.m. We're doing that in conjunction with the Recreation Department. It's, we've always had a real good turnout for that. And I don't want to steal the Recreation Department, their thunder, but I did talk with CM White the other day on the phone, you know, because we're starting to plan this. And somebody at the Recreation, Recreation Department suggested this is a free event. Maybe we should, we should ask people that are signing up to go to this, to bring things to donate to the food pantry. So, you know, that's, that's something that they came up with, but I think it's a great idea.
And for those watching at home that may not be familiar, what is Wings and Wheels?
Wings and Wheels is similar to like Touch a Truck, except we do it at the airport. And we do have vehicles from police, fire, DPW, and the, like, department in the airport. And then we also have airplanes. And, you know, we've had helicopters in the past for people to look at. And it's something, it's primarily run by the Recreation Department. You do have to sign up to go, because of, you know, limited number of spots. But it's, it's been a very good event.
Could you just remind us of the date and time again?
It will be on May 11, 9 a.m. to 11 a.m.
Yeah, I think originally it said May 18.
Oh, excuse me, May 18.
That is on May 18.
It's the 18th?
Yeah, yeah.
And the people just, if they're interested, they have to go on the Recreation site for registration.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They can contact them directly.
Great. Okay. And we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we took things a little bit out of order, so.
Oh, that's perfectly fine.
Feel free to pull up a seat. If there's anything you'd like to add. Mr. Raymond, he said great things about you before you got here.
He's paid very well, so. No, nothing for me, Mr. Chairman. Mark Raymond has done a fabulous job since he's taken over for Russ McGuire. Russ did a great job, and Mark's following in his footsteps. And we have department head meetings every week, and everything's going smoothly down there, and, which is great.
Great.
Business is good, and facility's in great shape. And MAST DOT and FAA continually support us on a lot of projects.
And we talked about the landing fee increase, so.
Which was Selectman Donnelly's idea a few years ago, which has been well received, I think, financially and.
He took credit for it.
Never pass up the opportunity for the spot.
Of course. Great. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, great. Mr. Sad?
One great job down there, both of you. Is there an age limit on this Wings and Wheels?
No.
So if somebody like me can go down there and touch planes?
Absolutely.
You could take me up for a ride?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
You're welcome anytime, Doug. Just give me, give me a call. I'll have you come down.
All right, I wish it.
They do let you fly, too.
That's right.
Okay, great. Well, thanks so much. Mark, are you gonna stick around for stormwater?
I am.
Great. Okay. That's it, Ms. Raymond?
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here.
Good to see you all.
Thank you. Good to see you, too.
Okay, so we do have two public hearings, one at 7 p.m. and one at 7:15. So we'll probably knock off a few new items in three minutes. Item 3.1, Common Vic application for Carnegie breakfast and lunch, doing business as The Sixties Diner, submitting a Common Vic application for Carnegie breakfast and lunch, doing business as The Sixties Diner located at 1210 Boston Providence Turnpike, Norwood, Massachusetts.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Ms. Plasko, sorry.
I wonder if we might just, this may be not necessary, but this gentleman has talked about alcoholic beverages at this location. And he is familiar with alcoholers. He has an alcohol license right next door at Boston Tavern. But I notice, I don't know what I do with the application. I noticed in the application, it says, serve food and drink. And I don't, even though I believe he's brought soft drinks and so forth, I've never really seen anybody bother to specify that on an application for Common Vicular's license.
Okay.
I wonder if we can just send some kind of, either condition on the application, on the license, or a side comment to him to make it clear that these are non-alcoholic beverages that can be served at the premises?
Yep, I see what you're saying, too. I guess I didn't catch that, but yeah, make food and drinks at breakfast and lunch. Right? Yeah.
And maybe not, maybe I'm being a little over cautious, but I'd rather do that than not.
Clear it up now, for sure. Could we approve conditional upon?
We'll just include a letter saying, yeah.
Clarifying that.
You're not the authority to sell alcohol at the site.
I think he knows that, because he was, it's a different alcohol for, alcohol, a different application for alcohol, but somehow I'm just uneasy about it.
Yep, that's a good catch, Mr. Plasko. So is this an amendment to the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion made by, Mr. Sad approved with an amendment stating that we will get correspondence from the applicant, that they understand.
To the applicant.
To the applicant, sorry, that the, there's no alcohol license at all involved in this.
Water, juice, and soda.
There you go.
Milkshakes.
Motion made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes are unanimous. Great. Let's do one more. Item 3.2. Let's do one more. Item three point two, sign placement. Norwood Evening Guarding Club submitting request to place three sandwich board signs at the following location on April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. One at the island at Manhattan Walpole Streets, one at the island at Dean and the Ponsett Streets, and one at the Nickel Street Rotary at Norwood High School. These signs will be advertising the annual Art in Bloom at the Memorial, Moral Memorial Library that will take place on April sixth and seventh.
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly. Do they, do they mean May sixth and seventh? Because they're asking to put signs out on April twenty-first for an event that they're stating takes place.
Yes.
Okay, so just to note that that's May sixth and seventh. Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Great, okay. Do we have the skating club, the hallway there? Excellent. How's it going?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome. Christine, if you would not mind reading the hearing for the Skating Club of Boston, change of manager.
Application has been made for the licensing board of the town of Norwood for a change of manager from Jonathan Jepson to Mia Corsini Bailey for the Skating Club of Boston, seven hundred and fifty University Avenue, Norwood, Massachusetts, under chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve of the Massachusetts General Laws. Public hearing on Saturday will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four at seven p.m. in the Harry B. Brothers Chambers, room thirty-four, Norwood Town Hall.
Great, beautifully read. Thank you, Christine. Welcome.
Hi.
If you'd like to introduce yourself, tell us why you're here, and then we'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments regarding your application.
Absolutely. Hi, thank you for having me this evening. Mia Corsini Bailey, I'm the new club director at the Skating Club of Boston. I took over for John Jepson late this summer and have been kind of working through all of our administrative needs over the past couple of months, one being change of manager for our liquor license, which was renewed under John's name. So that is why I am here this evening, and I worked with Christine on the paperwork, so that's what I have for this evening.
Okay, great. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Christine, everything looked good on your end. So we will open it up to the board. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I am surprised that Doug let you come along. He's never missed an opportunity to be on TV or in front of a microphone before.
Oh, well, you haven't met me yet. Hi. So good to be here.
No questions, Mr. Donnelly.
Okay, great. Mr. Donnelly?
Welcome. So the application's well done. I'm, you look like you're very well qualified for this role, but I was wondering if you might be able to tell us a little more about your previous background to this role at the skating club?
Yeah, I spent ten years with U.S. Figure Skating in Colorado Springs. U.S. Figure Skating is the national governing body for the sport of figure skating in the country. There I was primarily focused on events, that would be my big umbrella, but also on athlete development. So being able to come back home to Massachusetts where I grew up has been a real win for me. And taking on this role as club director has been very fulfilling as well. So still continuing to learn and looking forward to getting closer to everyone here in the town of Norwood as well.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Mr. Sad?
Welcome. I just want to say it's a beautiful spot down there, great for Norwood. Make sure you take care of my old Mustang boys and girls hockey team.
Hey, they're in the playoffs.
Thank you, that's right now.
Go Mustangs.
Yep, thank you.
Great, excellent. Anything else?
Uh, just, I've, like, all of my colleagues have said, I'm very, very impressed with your background, and I think this will be excellent, so welcome to town.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Great, thanks. As this is a public hearing, we'll now take any comments, questions from the public.
Motion to close the hearing?
Uh, seeing now the questions, comments from the public, a motion to close the hearing made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve the change in management?
Motion to approve the change of manager from Jonathan Jepson to Mia Corsini Bailey for the Skating Club of Boston, made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You guys coming to the game tomorrow night?
The boys are all stuck in meetings.
Tonight, I think?
No, tomorrow.
I'll be there.
Okay, good.
I'll see you there.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, great. Where were we? Item three point three. Town common request, Norwood Recreation Department submitting request to use the Town Common Gazeebo for Norwood Day on September seventh, twenty-twenty-four from five a.m. until five, four-thirty p.m. The gazebo will be used for speaking and performances. The town common will be used for vendors with tables and chairs provided by the Recreation Department.
Motion to approve the request?
Motion approve the request made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item three point four, town common request, Norwood Recreation Department submitting request to use the Town Common gazebo for the twenty-twenty-four Holiday Extravaganza on Sunday, December first, twenty-twenty-four, from eleven a.m. until four-thirty p.m. We're already talking about December, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item three point five, town common request, Norwood Farmers Market submitting request to use the Town Common for the Farmers Market for eighteen consecutive Tuesdays beginning June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and ending on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from two p.m. until six p.m. An exception is noted on August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, when the hours will be from twelve noon until four p.m. In coordination with the Norwood Police Department Annual National Night Out. And I know that Mr. McFarland has already coordinated with the police, it's all good, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item three point six, guess what? It's a town common request, Norwood Arts Association submitting request to use the Town Common for the annual Art in the Park event to take place on Saturday, twenty, June, June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, with a rain date of Sunday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, from eight a.m. until four p.m. With approximately seventy-five to one hundred attendees expected.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. I think that's it for town common requests. Item three point seven, council on aging, board appointment. Submitting request for appointments to fill the vacancy left by the passing of longtime board member Betty Maston. So we have a talent bank. There are some folks that had submitted interest in the COA. And some of those applications may be a little bit older, and I think it's, our due diligence will be to contact those individuals. I'm happy to do it myself, and ask if, one, they're still interested, and, two, if they would consider coming in. Because I think we'll have a few folks, and I think that's probably the most fair way to do it, at the suggestion of Mr. Plasko. So does that work for everybody?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Chair's recommendation?
Great. Do we have to vote on that or no?
Just move the table until we can get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, so item three point seven, we'll table until we have a couple of people to bring in. And it'll be nice to see some new folks, maybe some folks we already know, and probably the following meeting we can make an appointment. Excellent, good. Item three point eight, Board of Assessors, Board Reappointment, submitting request to reappoint Robert M. Thornton as a member of the Board of Assessors for a three-year term that will expire on April first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. I didn't think that would be too controversial. Item three point nine, preliminary vote to refinance Norwood's bonds, Town Treasurer and Collector Alex Haggerty submitting request for preliminary approval by the Board of Selecting to refinance two of the town's general obligation bonds. Mr. Mazuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a part of our due diligence with our financial advisors. They always look for any bonds we could refinance that might save the town money. If we're able to do this, it's about a fifty-fifty shot, might be about a fifteen thousand dollar annual savings on these two bonds. So with the board's preliminary vote, we'll be able to go ahead and see if we're able to save any money. If not, there's no harm and there's no money expended.
Okay, and can you talk about, so the current interest rate is?
So we, all of our bonds are at different rates based on when we move out to the market, but they're always looking at whether there's anything that's at a rate that we might be able to drop that rate even just a little bit, save a few bucks.
And that's what this is?
Yep.
Great. Anything else from the board? Mr. Sad?
Just, Mr. Manager, is it possible we wait a month, or two, or three, and just, because the rates are coming down, that's all we hear about, rates coming down? Is it worth that risk?
It's, no, because it's sort of when we go to the market, we'll be able to see if it works. If it doesn't work, we don't lose the opportunity to do it in the future.
All right.
Um, we did a large refunding, sorry, refinancing maybe five years ago, where a lot of our, we saved quite a bit of money, a lot of our rates came down. So it's rare that we can actually find something that's lower, but occasionally there's a small note somewhere. And again, the fifteen thousand dollar savings, these were not too large bonds to begin with, but it was, we're just trying to squeeze every dollar we can.
Yep, just like a homeowner.
Yep.
Got it?
Okay, so you're asking for approval to prepare and distribute a preliminary official statement for the refinancing of two general obligation bonds dated January sixteenth, twenty-fourteen, and June twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a need to read the, we had some of the, I guess the financial advisor has crafted a specific motion. Do we need to read that into the record?
You can. It's also incorporated by reference into the minutes as the official vote of the board.
Uh, yeah, let's read it, Mr. Donnelly.
So the motion is that in order to save interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of bonds under general law, chapter forty-four, section twenty-one a, to refund all or any portion of the remaining principal and of and redemption premium in interest of the town's general obligation bonds dated January sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and June twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen. And that for the purpose, for this purpose, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the preparation and distribution of a preliminary official statement, provided however, that no bond shall be issued under this vote unless and until the final interest rates and other terms of this refund, of the refunding bonds are approved by the board.
Beautiful. Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Does Alex need anything else from us? Mr. Mazuko? Okay, we've still got a few minutes. Item three point ten, scheduling next meeting with Norwood Light Department. So I put this on the agenda just because I feel like it had been a while since we had met with the group. There are certain things that we would need to do, set rates, talk about project updates, and I just thought maybe getting this done sometime late March or early April, if that works.
Yeah, what we actually have to do is, we do have to have a meeting in roughly that timeframe. There's some rate adjustments we have to make, rates aren't going up, but there's a statutory filing deadline for that, so the date will sort of be determined by when it gets filed, when it goes in the paper. Then there's a hearing process and it goes in sometime in April. And then we just got back our analysis of the broadband build-out project. We'll be bringing that back to the board soon, probably in the next couple of weeks, because we said once we're sort of ready to move forward, before we pull the trigger, we'd bring it back to the board. I'm wondering if we just add the light department back into our regular department rotations? They used to come every month as, and just provide a regular monthly update like public works and other departments do. We wanted to sort of separate it out, do separate meetings, and there's often not enough meat to accommodate that. But rather than not do it for a long period of time, I wonder if we just add them back into the regular rotation.
What if selfishly for my chairmanship is that I want to have one more?
I can rush to, well, Mr. Chairman, nobody knows who's going to be the chair in April, so you never know. Some people are chairman for life. I can work diligently to make that happen. It just may be that we have them back three weeks after that, based on the, the rate hearing schedule, but we'll.
We can handle what we have, and the rest we can have another meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on seeing if we can accommodate that.
Okay, and.
Maybe that'll be good for the broadband project, you know, just to make it happen, so. Good, I just wanted that to just be out there.
Did you have anything, Ms. Grow?
Uh, just one small thing was, I will say there is benefit to it being separate from the standpoint of just mentally, you're coming at it with a different approach. When we have it sort of dovetailed in with other business, we obviously get a ton of business all the time. You don't really get to think about things very much. The light is a very complicated topic from multiple vectors.
A simple meeting.
It can be simple.
We should be meeting with them.
Yeah, great. Well, I agree. That's great to hear. Okay. Item, do we have, let's, we can do three eleven after the hearing, right?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think we brought up the seven fifteen mark.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you so much for being here. This is a public hearing for Yankee Spirits, a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of stock interest, and change of pledge of license stock or inventory. Welcome. Christine, if you would not mind reading the hearing notice?
Application has been made to the licensing board of the town of Norwood for change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of stock interest, and change of pledge of license, stock or inventory for Yankee Spirits Incorporated. Manager of record, Jose G. Santos, under chapter one thirty-eight, section fifteen of the Massachusetts General Laws, has amended for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to reach on the premises of nine forty-two Boston Providence Turnpike, Norwood, Massachusetts. Description of premises is as follows. Twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-seven square feet, one entrance and one exit. Public hearing on this application will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven fifteen p.m. in the Harry B. Brothers Chambers, room thirty-four, Norwood Town Hall.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Thanks. Thanks for being here. If you'd like to introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is John Dross. I'm an attorney with Fitzgerald Law. We're based in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and we represent Yankee Spirits. As you know, Yankee Spirits is at nine forty-two Providence Turnpike, Route one. And they are a package store that has operations in Sturbridge, Swansea, Attleboro, and Norwood. And they're in the process of doing some internal housekeeping, corporate housekeeping. The, the main shareholder had a trust. His daughters were the beneficiaries of that trust. And they've been previously approved as beneficial interests, but the trust, the, the daughters are now at an age where they don't need a trust anymore. And we are terminating the trust, and they're becoming the shareholders. There's a few other corporate changes, a couple of people retired that were officers. Now there's, Jim Giuliano is the sole officer. He was currently just the president, now he's treasurer and secretary. And the third aspect is where they did some recent bank financing, and the bank is looking for a pledge of the license.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I think this is the first time a change of stock interest has been in front of me, so.
Yeah.
Unique. Great, so in terms of the operations of the store?
Not, nothing will change. It's just, the same thing has been going on. The board of directors are the same. It's just more internal housekeeping.
Great. I will open it up to questions from the board. Mr. Sad?
Are you from East Long Meadow, Massachusetts?
I am, well, yeah, I live in Wilbraham, but our office is in East Long Meadow.
Would you remember a guy by the name of Joe Niznick?
Joe Niznick?
J.C.'s?
Oh, you know, Niznick sounds familiar. And I, and who was he?
He was my campaign manager when I ran for national vice president.
Oh, all right.
Great guy.
Okay.
East Long Meadow Country Club, you played there?
Yeah.
What a great track, Bill. You've got to get out there. It's a great track, but no, I have no further, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, the J.C.'s always had a big program up there with the Fourth of July festivities and.
Great area, I love it.
Oh, thanks.
Excellent. Ms. Grow?
I'm good, seems very straightforward.
Um, Mr. Plasko, I know you had mentioned something that caught your attention.
Thank you. I looked over your application. Everything seemed to be in order, until I looked closer this morning.
Yeah.
And looking at the pledge.
Yes.
You have four establishments.
Yes.
But you say that you, or this whoever made out this pledge, beverage licenses more particularly described as follows below. All alcoholic on-premise. We're talking about off.
Off-premise, yes, so the pledge must have been.
Are you authorized feel comfortably in changing this?
Yeah, sure.
And then?
Yeah.
I think the ABC will accept it, and we can move it forward.
Just initially, I think that's fine, yeah. Just a notate.
Yes, line it out, write off, and initially I think we'll work.
Yep. Great.
Thank you.
You're the only one that pointed that out.
He was going, see, you remember.
Yeah.
For a lot of consultancy.
Yeah. Was there anything else?
I'll forgive you.
Okay, all right. We saved you a couple bucks, I think, there. Mr. Donnelly?
Um, no, everything seems to be well in order. When you do see Mr. Giuliano, just say hello to him. He's a good friend of mine.
Okay.
I've known him for a long time. It's very well-run organization, and this seems pretty cut and dry, given the circumstances of the trust and the daughter's now becoming members of the, of the corporation, so thank you very much for the cooperation.
Great, sorry to make you come back. I think we need one more.
Oh, I hate to be a pain, but it's this on, not that on.
No, I appreciate it.
On, off-premise instead of on-premise.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
As this is a public hearing, we'll now move on to any questions or comments from the public? As this is a public hearing, we're now, to any questions or comments from the public?
Motion to close the public hearing made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve the change of the answer.
Motion to approve the change of officers, directors, managers, change of stock interest, and change of pledge of license stock or inventory made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous.
Great.
Thank you, thanks so much for being here.
Good luck on that ride, Dan. Thank you. It's a long one.
I know, I have done it many nights.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care, thanks so much. Okay, and then our final appointment is 7:45, so we have some time, which is good. We left off on.
3.11.
3.11. Mr. Plasko, if you would not mind perhaps talking about.
Sure, I put a little together that you have in your packets, recapping the fact that, and asking the board to consider establishing a scholarship fund, and the fact that we kind, some of us, a number of people, had talked about after Assistant, longtime Assistant General Manager Bernie Cooper's passing, of starting a scholarship up in his memory. General Manager and some others that did some research have found that, in fact, the town in 1994 had accepted provisions of Mass. General Law 60, Section 3F, or C, I think it is, I got a typo here, let's see, 3C, that allows the town to do that. The idea is that the scholarship would include the superintendent, which is set up by the law, and at least four, whatever number we decide, at least four other residents who would run the scholarship in accordance with the provisions of the law. And the funding is raised exclusively on the outside. The town could donate, but we're not asking for that. We're asking for it to be self-sustaining. The, some people have already pledged or donated actual cash already, up to $20,000, so it's a good, good start, and I think we need to just make it formal, get it into the right-approved venue, and the money deposited, and the committee established. We might, I don't have any particular names to recommend tonight, it might take a couple more weeks for that. I'd like to, hopefully the board would accept the concept, accept the fact that we have the laws and everything we need ready to go, and we have some money to be a seed to this effort, and so tonight I would ask the board to vote to approve the creation of a scholarship foundation in the memory of Bernard Cooper, and we will come back shortly with perhaps a formal name and some recommendation for members to the, to the committee.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Mizuko, anything to add?
No, I think Mr. Plasko covered it well.
That's great, thank you. So, Mr. Plasko, you would like a formal vote to create a scholarship in memory of Bernard Cooper, under authorization of the acceptance statute.
Yeah, the motion would be to create the scholarship fund in memory of Bernard Cooper, as authorized under Chapter 60, Section 3C of Mass. General Law, and approved by the May 1994 Special Town Meeting.
Great. Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. That's excellent. Sorry, go ahead.
On that motion, just a follow-up question, between now and when we are appointing people for the committee, are there any particular qualities we want volunteers to have for that particular one to serve, between now and when we actually find some residents to appoint? In case there's anybody out there listening that's thinking, well, maybe I could help with that.
Yeah, well, people, I would think people that knew Mr. Cooper and appreciated, you know, his time and service to the town, and outside events that were kind of somewhat town-sponsored, like concerts in the common and so forth, that kind of thing, the Fourth of July parade, maybe, maybe ask if any of his family members might be interested in serving on it, and I would think people that knew Mr. Cooper and appreciated his efforts would be the most likely candidates. They're the ones that are going to be willing to go out and knock on doors and try to shake some cash free.
Great. Mr. Sad?
Just a quick question, is this for the high school kids that are graduating, going off to college?
Yeah, scholarship foundation, or scholarship.
Great, no, that's excellent. Thank you so much. Great. Item 3.12, donation acceptance, Domino's.
Thank you, by the way.
Oh, of course, no, that's great, Mr. Plasko, thank you, it's exciting. Domino's Plowing for Pizza Program, submit request pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to accept a donation from Domino's as part of their nationwide plowing for pizza program. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to accept the donation?
Okay. Motion to accept the donation, which is at the amount of $25,000, correct, Mr. Mizuko?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 3.13, Cemetery Dean.
Motion to file?
Motion to file made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. That brings us to the Yellow Sheet, Board's Positions on the Articles for the Upcoming Town Meeting. We've got about 20 minutes. What do you think?
I think you can get through some of them if you maybe take them out of order. Some won't lead to as much discussion, just by way of recommendation. Article 6, the Planning Board still has the ADU or accessory dwelling unit by law under review. That might be just simple that the Board of Selectmen will render an opinion at town meeting, because it's just not, there may be significant changes, there may be several changes coming to it. That would be my recommendation.
This is Article 6?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, so the Planning Board may be making amendments?
Yeah, they left the hearing open. I think they're having one more meeting on it, so.
Okay.
I had a hearing, they had a hearing last night.
Yeah.
And the article that was presented to us was, of course, the topic of discussion that's on the warrant, and a number of questions and comments have been made by members of the committee and members of the public, that they wanted to take a little more time to see if they should amend it in any way, from the way it's presented, or even hold off on it altogether, and so what decision might be made. So, as Mr. Mizuko said at the moment, they haven't even taken a position.
Right. So, we don't have a recommendation.
I know I personally have some concerns with some of the zones they want to include, but the kennels, no, that's on another topic, excuse me. This is a big improvement over what we have currently, or don't have currently.
Okay, great. Mr. Sad?
Actually, it wasn't this topic, it wasn't the kennels, it's the, it's the other one that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, the ADU is the one that.
Accessory housing.
Yeah, that's the one, it's, the board described, my recommendation would be you wait till town meeting, because it may go through another set of changes.
They will have to alter the language.
To the public, my question would be, is this the one that the state's going to do for accessory paddocks, basements, garages?
Maybe, the governor, we're talking about Article 6, which would allow accessory dwelling units by right. The governor has filed a housing bill.
Yep.
That would require or would mandate accessory dwelling units by right, so this may end up being a moot point in a sense, but the Planning Board just hasn't been able to finish their work. There's just a lot of discussion, so I don't know, you can take a position on it certainly, but you'd be taking a position on something that may then change quite a bit between now and town meeting. Not to say that anything can't change, things always do, but I.
They're going to file the bill to make it mandatory on all the towns, but you would think the legislature after 3A, and the backlash they come from that, might want to at least think about it a little bit. Just so the people on TV land understand what's the next blow coming to us.
Okay. So, with regard to Article 6, the board's position is to wait, postpone, is that?
Yeah, well, I think we've done it in the past in the Yellow Sheet, it's just, the board will render an opinion at town meeting or something like that, or for a town meeting, and it may be that.
No, no final opinion at this time, at this print, at the time of printing or whatever.
Okay. All right, and we don't need a vote on that language, per se.
We'll track these sort of as we go, and then we'll incorporate that as one vote for the Yellow Sheets.
Okay, great. All right. Should we go back to Article 1?
Yeah.
Okay.
With some support?
Article 1 is the amendment to the zoning bylaw, Section 3, to prohibit commercial kennels in the single, single residence S1 and single residence S2 zoning districts.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on Article 1, and I believe Article 2 helps expand it. This is one of those quirks in the zoning where we did have an issue of a kennel operating, and created some neighbor concerns, and we went back and actually updated our bylaw, and commercial kennels are, it's a state definition, weren't allowed in certain residential areas, and it's just not really consistent with a lot of our neighborhoods where we have smaller, denser housing, and people are rearing and raising six or eight or 10 dogs, so this has actually been kicking around for a couple of years.
Great. Mr. Sad?
My, Mr. Manager, my question is, why isn't G-zone, which is 50% of the town in Norwood, included in that? The Planning Board, can we ask them why they haven't included G-zone?
I think they may already not be allowed in the G-zone.
Okay.
We were surprised to find the zones that they were allowed in, it seemed to be the opposite of what it should be allowed in.
I'll take a look at the zoning book tomorrow. All right, thank you.
But this is, it is to reduce that potential, and again, the state has a legal definition of a commercial kennel. For somebody to be breeding and selling dogs in a two-family home on a very small lot next to another, it's just created some neighborhood problems. Obviously, people will be grandfathered in if they're doing it, but it's probably not a, not felt to be a consistent use.
Yeah, I think that's how I read it, too, is that it would require a special permit, right? Okay. A motion made by Mr. Plasko to support Article 1.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Article 2 is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, sorry.
Goes hand in hand.
Goes hand in hand with Article 1 to update our definitions, to make sure they match. The state has a definition of commercial and personal kennel, and this is one of the other problems we identified in trying to rectify this neighborhood issues, that our definitions weren't exactly matching up.
So, these three new definitions will be part of the article we just voted on?
Correct.
Okay. Motion approved made by Ms. Gross, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Article 3, amendment to the zoning bylaw, Section 1.5.2, establishing procedures for public notice by the Planning Board to affected parties. The proposed regulations provide for greater accountability that affected parties as defined by town meeting, and provide sufficient notice in public hearings for proposed zoning amendments. Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just sort of codifying the Planning Board's public hearing process and expanding the notice procedures, establishing them in bylaw, which is something we've heard from town meeting members over the several years about how we go about providing official notice. The state law sets a minimum, we are able to go beyond that, we are going beyond that in this, and it's just sort of codifying it in our own bylaws.
Okay. Anything on that article from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to support Article.
I should be using the word support, I said approve, I'm sorry.
Article 3.
A motion made by Mr. Donnelly to support Article 3, seconded by Ms. Gross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Okay, Article 4 and Article 5 go hand in hand. We've got about 10 minutes until the next hearing, so we can start talking about it. I'm sure there'll be plenty of discussion as well at town meeting. Article 4, sorry, I just lost my place, is for the new zoning overlay district named MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. MCMOD, article proposes to amend the zoning bylaw to come into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, a state law also known as Section 3A of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, as passed by the state legislature in 2021. Law requires changes to the zoning bylaw, but does not require any construction. Zoning regulates land uses and dimensional requirements for new uses and construction on parcels and districts of land. Compliance with the law involves creating certain changes to the zoning bylaw as described in these articles. Production of housing and resulting construction of new units is not a measurement of compliance with MBTA communities or this zoning bylaw amendment. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for, to support Article 4.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly to support Article 4.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gross. On the motion, Mr. Plasko?
Mr. Chairman, I fully expect that the town will, should comply with the unfortunate mandate and the way the state did it, but in particular, the way Norwood is set up and the things that have already happened in town, based on our understanding of how to implement the law, should have a fairly minimal impact, so we must comply, or we can comply easily. My problem has been, I mean, originally, I did a lot of talk about the process, but now that we're down to moving forward and trying to do something, get a bylaw in place, I still have serious problems with the proposed bylaw. The proposed bylaw, in my opinion, goes way too far, more than we need to do. We can step back, meet the law, without doing much of what is being proposed, and giving ourselves time through our master plan committee and town meeting to decide ourselves how we want to develop those areas, as we have downtown and Route 1 and so forth. If we had to go into those districts and do those things to comply with the law, we'd have to have a different discussion, but we don't. For example, we have to, we have to have the possibility of creating 2,045 units. The proposal in the area of Windsor Gardens by itself is 1,964. All we need is another 181 units.
Right.
Why are we going up to 78 acres of land? And I find that that is something I want to bring up, whether this board votes to support this or not, and when we send out the Yellow Sheet, some information I think they hear is very misleading we should talk about. Might not have been intentional, but it turns out to be, for example, Norwood's propose achieves the required unit capacity by spreading the required unit density across the larger area, talking about the 78 acres. As I just pointed out, no, that's not the least bit necessary, you know, so it's misleading to say that's why we got the 78 acres, because we needed to do it to get to it. We get to it just with Windsor Gardens practically. Another 81, if we do the depot, where they are, what's going to happen there, what's going to be built there, along with Windsor Gardens, you've more than met the state mandate. So, I know we probably don't want to spend all night with all our arguments, if you want, I can do that, too, but, but I think the main point is, the town, I believe, wants to comply, the people I've spoken to want it, but they want to grow it and moderate it, so fashion to control and take into consideration everything that needs to for growing community, schools, transportation, police, fire, everything that we have to do, and to grow slowly, not quickly. Implementing this as is proposed will cause us to grow much faster than necessary. I know a lot of it is speculative to the future, but also what's being proposed now, for example, if we do the Windsor Gardens, who knows when, if ever, that's going to happen, and yet we can meet the mandate. But if we do, but if we do some, but if we do some of the other parts of what's being proposed, we'll probably have, well, round number, round number just over 400 units that'll be built within the next couple of years. And do we want Sunway to have another 400 units built on top of other things that are happening? So, I just think, since we have the opportunity to meet this mandate and go slow and in a more moderate fashion, that that's a better course of action than rushing forward with all these details. There's a lot else to get into the bylaw, different sections that I would, you know, make a motions to, to amend, to take them out and so forth, but that's it in a nutshell. I just think there's no need to go as far as this proposal takes us.
Okay. Mr. Sad.
I got a few notes, 15 of them. It says in here, "Law requirements. The law of the MBTA community shall have the zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. However, multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be with, shall be suitable for families with children." I don't think that we're thinking this thing through. I've, if you add 2,000 apartments in Norwood, 1,500 people will be with children, or 1,200, automatic on the apartment units. If you look at the person down at Honeydew, he's got five one bedrooms, 15 two bedrooms, and I think six or eight or nine three bedrooms. That one building alone is going to include 25 kids in the Norwood school system. Our schools can be bulging, and the height restrictions, they're going to ruin the decor of Norwood. Four or five stories, that's like being a Norwood hospital right up on the main street. The extra bonus, I mean, they're giving the store away, and the state's not helping us. We're going to get, as a town, we're going to get destroyed. Milton voted against this because they had the smarts to say, I don't know if the school department should be in here in front of us with the FinCom. How many teachers do we need? How many policemen do we need for 1,000 more people? How many more firemen? How many more school additions are we going to have to afford? This is going to really put a dent in Norwood. The look of Norwood, the size, the shape, the whole decor of Norwood, the downtown, I mean, Lenox Street's going to be high rises. Five stories, you put 200 square feet of green space up there, it's all solar panel, you get an extra floor. I mean, there should be a high restriction in here. Westwood does it smart. Rentham's going to vote against it the next couple of weeks. I mean, why are we rushing into this thing? I think you have to get every committee together in a room, maybe here or another room, and say, how many teachers are you going to need for 1,000 more kids? 500 more kids? Because they're going to come. The developers are already chopping in their bit to come to Norwood. Great water, great electricity, great tax rate, and they're going to come to Norwood and build high rises, just like Dedham, Forest Hills, and throw up these massive apartment buildings. You can't take that chance. I mean, why are we taking that chance? Because the governor said we have to do it? Well, maybe we don't send our money to the governor. We'll keep our Norwood here and know it, the money in Norwood, but it just seems like we're giving the store away. You know, you put a little patch of grass up there like the person in Honeydew area, he's putting 200 square feet up on the second floor, third floor, he gets an extra floor maybe. That's 12 more units in that building, and it's going to be 50 feet up with 10 feet in the back, which is 50 feet off the street, the size of Norwood Hospital. We're going to get ruined as a town. And it's our job as leaders to say, hey, wait a minute, let's take the approach of what it's going to cost to educate these kids. And my other thought was, I talked to the principal of the junior high, when they transfer those kids up from the Bolt School and the other elementary schools, they're at 800 kids right now, they're going to be 1,050. The school's only built for 1,200. So I want to throw it out there tonight that we should keep the gym, the cafeteria, and leave that portion, Mr. Donnelly maybe look into it with the committee, of leaving that building up, and you can just put a walkway through and tie into the old building if we need it. We're going to need, these kids are coming. I mean, you can see it, they're going to build and build. The Boston Housing says for a three-bedroom, you get four grand a month. They're going to build three bedrooms. So I'm 100% against it.
Okay.
I say fight it, let them come back at us, and maybe we'll save the town some money because there's a cost that's going to be on the police, the fire, the teachers, the school, the traffic, the tires they're going to put down, the heat exposure on the tire, all the water runoff, and we're going to get killed with everything. But that's my point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. A lot of numbers being thrown out there, Mr. Sad. We do have an appointment at 7:45, and I think...
Do you want to pause this and start at 7:45 and then return to it?
I think we want to pause, but I am going to say something before we take our 7:45. I think a lot of things are going to be said, especially at town meeting. People will have strong feelings about this law and how we choose to respond to it. I don't want to discredit anything that you've said, or you've said, Mr. Plasko, or any other members of the board. I think if we get into this discussion of sort of referencing things that we think might happen but aren't a certainty, like production of a certain number of units or bringing in a certain number of children, I think the conversation gets pretty convoluted. So we're going to do this hearing at 7:45. I'm going to think a little bit more about maybe how to talk about these two articles, which is, again, not to say that the things that have been said already are invalid, certainly not saying that. And I appreciate everyone's perspective and their, you know, their right to, to their opinion on these articles, but I'm not sure we would ever leave this room if we kind of kept going at this rate. So, that being said, welcome. We have our 7:45 hearing. Mr. Joe Rich and Mr. Mark Ryan, Mr. Hopcroft, thank you so much for being here. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just wanted to introduce Joe Rich from CDM Smith, who's been working with the AdHoc Stormwater Utility Committee, which Jerry Hopcroft is the chairman of, and Selecton Donnelly's a part of, as well as Alan Slater. And we've been working on this for a few months, looking for ways that we, we have a real need, Mr. Chairman, to address issues with our stormwater system. The town has been very good addressing our water main system, our sewer system, our roadway system, our bridge systems. And stormwater is the latest that, not that we are looking, that we want to find another project, but we need to do this. This is something that's being mandated by the United States EPA, as well as Mass DEP for municipalities under the MS4 permitting process to take care of our stormwater systems, either through water quality issues around different municipalities, as well as handling flooding issues. And the Stormwater Utility, which you've probably all seen before, looks to fund these projects, which are sorely needed. For example, the Meadowboro watershed right now has a price tag of close to $40 million for improvements there. And back in 2004, that was a little less than $9 million. So we're, we're getting, you know, to a scale of four or five times more cost to do something that we neglected to do. So we're finally coming around to trying to address this. Joe's going to go through the whole stormwater utility setup, you know, its mechanism, how it would work in the town in Norwood, and how it would address a lot of the issues that we're trying to take care of throughout the town. So with that, Mr. Mazukov has anything to say? I just pass him on to Mr. Rich?
No, just let me know. I will be your slide.
Okay, I was, thank you.
He has one of my most important duties, so just as you need a slide in here, just yell "slide."
He works for you tonight. But I will say very quickly, Mr. Hopcroft, Mr. Nick Brewer was here earlier presenting this project, and he said how much of a help you've been, so that's great. Thank you. It was an nice presentation. Okay, Mr. Rich, go for it.
Yeah. As Mark went through, we've been working with the town staff and the committee to help the town understand the implications of a stormwater utility and how it works. So really going to try to do two things as I go through my presentation. One is, since they're relatively uncommon, certainly in Massachusetts, but all of New England, sort of describe what they are and how they work, and sort of the history of them, and then review the estimates that we've come up with Norwood, which would be the basis if you decide to move forward, what the rates would be, and we can talk about other issues associated with the rates.
We're not taking a vote tonight, though.
No, this is just, because we're, I put it a little out, really focusing on how a fee is established, what it, how you get to the number, because we might say X dollars.
I was only joking. Stormwater utilities in the U.S. have been around since the 1970s. They started primarily in Colorado, the Pacific Northwest, and the Southeast to deal with development that was going on. There are about 2,100 utilities in the U.S. right now, according to a survey that's done by North Kentucky University. When I was going through notes, 10 years ago, there were fewer than 600 in the United States, so it's becoming more and more common. But as I mentioned, there are very few in New England, 25 in Massachusetts. And I know the committee report had a list of the mass, the mass ones. There's 10, by my sort of rough count, that are currently being evaluated in various communities. If the last couple of years are any indication, three or four of those will go down, the rest will go forward. They are, in my world, virtual utilities in the sense that they do not have a separate staff, they don't create a whole organization. They really piggyback onto existing operations, and they're really a funding mechanism more than a pure utility. The basic concept of a stormwater utility is, as the amount of impervious surface increases in total and on a particular parcel, the amount of runoff that is generated and the amount of pollutants in that runoff increase proportionally to the amount of impervious area. And so the idea is to assess, call them customers, but parcel owners, based on the amount of impervious area, because that's what generates the runoff and the pollutant load that the public system and the receiving waters have to deal with. Massachusetts did not explicitly authorize stormwater utilities until the late 2010s, 2015, 2016, which is part of the reason it's been slow developing here. It's also, I say this as a Westerner, New England conservative government that didn't want to step forward. The general law is pretty general in that it just says it has to be equitable, has to be uniform, and has to be rational. And so all 25 mass utilities that I've looked at charge customers based on the amount of impervious area. So total up how much impervious area it is, determine how much each parcel has, figure out how much money you need to generate, divide that by the amount of impervious area, and that becomes your billing rate.
So in those 25 municipalities, they're not that different in terms of...
They're not that different. I mean, there's sort of variations in terms of whether typically, I'll go back to this, but typically, they create a billing unit, which is an equivalent residential unit, and then allocate that out to everybody else. But some communities have a flat fee for all properties. Others have a tiered structure for residential properties, so you've got very small parcels, very large parcels, they don't change exactly the same rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide. Go back one, please. Under Mass law, it's a fee, not a tax, and that's because it's allocated to customers based on some demand for service. It compensates the utility for the services it provides. And in order to have it treated as a fee and not a tax, it has to be allocated to all customers in the service area. So you can't exempt classes of property from the fee. As we were just talking about, typically, the unit of service is an equivalent residential unit, which is the average impervious area class, all residential properties. So in Norwood, that happens to be about 3,400 square feet, but we did it for single-family properties only, which is one of the variants. And then all other properties, take the total impervious area, divide it by 3,400, and that's how many billing units are assigned. So it's, we don't have a meter, so that's how we determine billing units. The reason for the flat rates were when these started, in order to get the impervious area for each parcel, you had to go out and physically measure every parcel. There's a lot of residential parcels in most communities, so the idea was, we'll create a standard base, and then we just sample that base, and that's been found in 40 states to be an acceptable method of creating these. Now, because of GIS technology, you can do it on actual impervious area per parcel. It does increase the amount of administrative work over time, because every time somebody does some change on their property, puts in a new shed, anything like that, theoretically, you need to change the amount of impervious and the number of billing units.
Saves a couple backaches, though, potentially, right?
Yeah. For Norwood, we base the billing unit on single-family properties because it's the predominant residential property class. I mean, the number of dwelling units just swamps the other ones, at least currently. I was listening to the previous discussion, and that may change over time, but that seemed to be the simplest, most equitable way to move forward. So a single-family parcel, all single-family parcels, at least as far as this has been developed, will pay the same amount per month. Everybody else will pay multiples of that 34, based on that 3,400 square feet. I put these in just to sort of give you a sense of how this works. So, and these were done with GIS, so these lines were drawn by the GIS, but, so this particular parcel, essentially the entire parcel is impervious area, and it's roughly 3,400, 34,000 square feet, excuse me. And there's a single-family parcel, and so it picks up the driveways. If there's, you know, sidewalk on the property line, it picks that up, the building footprint, obviously, and any other secondary buildings, and that's roughly 3,400 square feet. So in the billing system, this parcel gets one billing unit, this parcel gets 10 billing units. Pretty straightforward, once you get through the mechanics of getting that data. And when we did the analysis, the town had done flyovers last spring, or last, a year ago fall.
Two years ago.
So we use that, the, between the software vendor who was doing the flyovers and the GIS folks at CDI, we have the amount of impervious area for each parcel, at least as of that date. So you've got a pretty good basis for the billing, to set up the billing basis. Next slide. So this is sort of the results of that updated GIS. So here's the land use categories that come out of the Mass Land Use Code that we usually organize things by. There's a total of 71 million square feet of impervious area in Norwood. Commercial is the largest class, and that would be shopping malls, strips, shopping strip malls, the car dealers, obviously. I think any hospital that we've got is institutional, but they represent 23 million square feet. So about 32% of total impervious area.
Okay.
Single families, the next, with almost 20,000 square feet, 28%. Industrial, about 17%. Then the other residential classes, as I was saying, total up to just under 10%. So not a huge amount of the impervious area, at least at the time we did it. So we took this data, we had the 3,400 square feet as the billing unit for the single family, divide the 3,400 into that, and you get 560 billing units. There are just under 5,600 single-family parcels, so they all count as one. So the important thing from my perspective is, single-family residential is 28% of the impervious area. They're 28% of the billing units, so they'll pay 28% of whatever the budget is, or the expenses are. And that carries all the way through. And they're a total, oh, sorry, mathematically, they're total 20,900 billing units. For the rate projections we've done, because I always try to be a little conservative because something goes wrong along the way, I use 20,700. The next chart, based on, we were asked to do two alternatives. One, that the stormwater fee only pays for the capital program that was developed with the department and the committee, and then the second alternative was to take the existing drainage budget, what some MS4 compliance requirements would add, project that out, and calculate the rate. So this bar chart is just total, the green is total capital expenses, blue is all stormwater expenses, as we did the projections. With the exception of vehicles, we've assumed that all of the capital projects would be debt funded, so they sort of lag, because it takes a couple of years for that debt service to fully hit the expenses. But once you get out to 2034, it starts to level off, pretty much. But it goes from, with the drainage budget, just over 500,000 a year, to about 3.5 million in the 10-year projection. That's based on CIP that's been sort of proposed, what needs are thought to be, so there's adjustment, but that's what we've used to run things. Then the second bar chart essentially calculates what the monthly ERU charge would be. So it starts out under the all-stormwater expense at just over $2 a month, so 24 bucks a year, $26 a year. In the out years, it's up to $14 a month, $168 if my math is right, but don't count on that. So that's sort of the projections we've done, and there's obviously... So, that's sort of the projections we've done, and there's obviously ways to stagger that, you know, by the time, primarily by the time in the capital projects. And if you had, you know, ARPA grants, or whatever grants are floating around, you could offset some of the capital, but we're assuming everything is debt-funded at this point. And that's it.
Okay. It's a lot of information, but I know that a lot of work has gone into this, so appreciate that. Before we open up any questions, anything, Mr. Hopcroft or Mr. Ryan, that you would like to add to Mr. Ridge's presentation?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I think it's just important to recognize that those estimates, that they're huge, we need something to work with. You can't project on that. And so, we're looking at a funding mechanism, not specific project. And I think the selectmen do need to think about reevaluating what the projects are going forward. And that probably means a Meadowbrook-like study for the entire town. I think if we don't stop at this point, everything you've got is Meadowbrook at the moment, so keep moving. But I think at the same time, you need to do a townwide study fairly quickly, because some of those projects in Meadowbrook are prioritized for that watershed, or not for the town. And we do need to prioritize for the whole town moving forward. Are the math systems right?
Good, thank you. Mr. Donnelly, I know you've been pretty heavily involved here, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, sir.
Just wondering if we can go back to that slide that has the impervious area estimates? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, this is the detail that, from the flyover in GIS, that kind of just really gets down to 71 million square feet of impervious areas. When you take this information and you translate it into a fee structure, these are the categories that we would assess fees on. So, basically, the fee structure is based on a, yes, an equivalent residential unit, but the more, I guess, the concept here is, the more you pay, the more you pay. So, I, as a single-family resident, may pay for one ERU, whatever that is, $50 a year, whatever. If I have a commercial residence that is 10, 20 times the size and square footage of impervious surfaces, they're going to be paying 10 or 20 times more than the rate I have.
Exactly, yep.
So, it is kind of scaled to, so that the, those properties that are more or less contributing the most towards the stormwater system are paying more. And I believe in our, in our initial model for the rate, I believe that we've got it structured so that, basically, those first few categories, single, two-family, three-family, apartments, real up to eight units, would basically pay the same ERU rate, if I'm mistaken, I can't remember, and then.
No, the way we've ended up is, a single-family, we will play, pay
Yeah.
A flat rate of, your example, 50 bucks. The resident above, it's actually, I think, above three-family resident, three-family and above, is based on the actual impervious area. So, so it's like that picture of the graphic.
Okay.
Now, there are, I said, there are all sorts of variations, so, and I'm doing some of this from memory, so Fall River treats single-family up to eight units
Mm-hmm.
On a flat-rate basis. And there's just, the data's weird. Eight-unit apartment, eight-unit apartment parcels in Fall River have less impervious area than the average single-family. So, there was a statistical analysis that was done. Lewiston in Maine treats single-family and two-family as a single class. So, there's, you know, variations that you can apply to this.
And those rates are going to differentiate year to year, based on the revenue required between operations and capital. If, I had one more question on those slides, if anybody wanted to comment on this one before.
Yeah, why don't you keep on this?
That slide that has the, the blue and the green, the
The bars?
Yeah, the bars. So, a couple of, so that one on the left kind of gives us an opportunity, like, so, these will be our rate revenue required.
That's exactly what it is, yep.
Okay. So, we, if we were to adopt a stormwater fee, we do have a couple of options we can look at. One is, some utilities apparently use the utility stormwater fee structure to pay for all the capital improvements, and we have a lot here in Norwood, plus whatever our operations budget is currently for drainage, so.
Which is essentially the blue bar.
The blue bar, right. The blue bar is, that's a combination of operations and the capital.
Yep.
So, obviously, when we, and I think it's important for people to know, that blue bar, some of those expenses were already paying for, because they already are being paid for the operations.
They are in your DPW general fund budget, I assume. Some of them, I have another slide, but
Right.
Most of it, I think, is in the general fund. There may be some of it that's in the sewer utility rate, just depending on how the accounting's done.
A municipality could have the flexibility to say that we will use the fee structure to, solely for our capital improvement budget needs.
Yes.
And we also could adopt a fee, if we so wish, that incorporated both the capital and the O&amp;M budget.
There's no sort of, I mean, the state laws, I said, is pretty general, and it just gives you the municipality the flexibility to decide what it is they're going to pay for, and then it just says the rate has to be equitable, rational, and.
So, in your experience, I guess the only other question I would have would be, in your experience, what is the driving motivation for municipalities to adopt a fee structure, as opposed to the capital and operating expenses being folded into another mechanism, whether it's the operating budget, or, I mean, what is it about the fee structure that is causing municipalities to adopt a separate fee?
The primary motivation has, in New England, the primary motivation has been the anticipated expenses with MS4 permits. Right now, they're relatively minor, but EPA and the federal government, Mass DEP, are still talking about going to water quality-based stormwater requirements, so the potential expenses are significant. You take that tied with the general tightness of municipal budgets, so if it's part of the municipal budget, then the decision has to be made whether you're going to fund schools, police, all of that, those basic trade-offs. And that was certainly the motivation when these were started originally, because it was a newly-developed land, so it was, we're going to keep our taxes relatively low, but we're going to create all these fees. As it's come sort of east and north, it's been driven by concerns about MS4 and Prop 2.5-type restrictions that have complicated municipal budgeting.
Thank you. So, in our case, you know, we have an O&amp;M budget that's already dealing with drainage and base requirements for MS4, but as we look at our capital needs, it becomes a real challenge for us in terms of how do we fund that. I would say to comply, yes, with MS4, but also, just, I think, Mr. Ryan can speak to this more precisely, or more educated-wise, I guess, that our history in terms of the, particularly in the Meadowbrook watershed, is that our history over the past 20 years shows that our capacity to, system capacities to handle this amount of floodwater that's currently we're dealing with, as well as the impact of further changes in weather that will amount to more rainfall in the future. It's going to make it even more challenging.
Combined effect, because you've got more impervious area, and you've got more big storms, generating more runoff that has to be dealt with in the municipal system, or you've got more flooding issues.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ridge.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Groh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question I was looking for, and maybe the manager might know as well, obviously, we're not making a decision tonight, but do we have a sense of when we're thinking we want to establish a fee in terms of timing, if you went that route?
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. There's a, there's a process, and the timing of establishing a fee, sort of board voting to do it versus a fee actually getting charged, there's a bit of a lag there, so I don't want, I don't want to think this would happen tomorrow. If the board were to move forward sometime this spring, we'd want to have town meeting vote to set up an enterprise fund in May, so that we're ready to move forward. The actual collection of a fee, realistically, is probably not going to start until January. We need, there's not only work that needs to happen sort of politically, from a policy level, there is then a process of making sure we can actually get it prepared to bill, get it out there, and get everything set up. So, there is a, this isn't a, we vote on a Tuesday, and then next week, a bill comes due. I would say if everything goes according to continuing to move forward at a pace, we probably actually wouldn't have collected the until this coming January. With most of the capital projects that we would be looking to fund, this, starting the process this November, maybe even the following November, just in terms of actually operationalizing it. Because it's, it's one thing to decide, and we could talk more about what we want our financial policy to be, and I'll be getting the board a memo in the next week or so on how to operationalize it, how we should focus on capital, but then the actual process of putting in how to bill out X,000 bills per month or per hour, that is going to take us some time. So, I would say the earliest it would probably hit would be January. I know that sounds crazy, nine months out, but there's a process, and it just takes time to get ready, to be ready to do it, to do the testing and everything.
And then, the only other things I was going to mention is, food for thought for us, as we're contemplating the topic, is, we're not dealing with our historical water trends, we're dealing with the new water, like, just this past month, the National Weather Service is talking about how we're experiencing orders of magnitude higher precipitation for this area in southern Massachusetts than we've had. And so, whatever approach we're taking, we should not be using a mindset of, well, we used to see, like, we're about to be seeing much, much, much worse precipitation, warmer weather.
We can't handle what we used to see, so forget about what's coming down the pipeline.
You know, warmer winters means a lot of that water that used to be trapped as a solid is now going to be fluid in a way that it used to not. There are many compounding factors that we need to be weighing, when we're considering the topic. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, on that, and Selectman Groh is correct, that the Meadowbrook drainage study is basing the quantity of flow and runoff rates on a storm predicted in the year 2070. So, I think that would be the blueprint for everything else going forward, but good point.
Mr. Sad.
I have a question. How do we, other towns call this a hard water tax versus a fee? Who determines that definition?
There is a legal standard for what is a fee versus what is a tax.
Yeah.
And the primary factor is that it is based on some objective measure of the service being provided. So, impervious area in, I believe, 44 states has been determined to be that objective factor.
So, how do the towns that are around us that have adopted this call it a hard water tax?
I don't know any of them do, you can refer to that, but you, as the selectman, don't have any authority to levy a tax that the legislature doesn't give you. Taxes levied on property, taxes levied on personal property, it's levied on vehicles, because state law established that as a tax that is so levied. So, I wouldn't know what town is calling it that, they're misusing state terms. We don't call a building P, a building tax, it's a building permit, it's a separate statutory framework.
Okay, so, next question I have is, I'd like to see them not included in a budget. I think it should be DPW budget and a stormwater tax budget, or whatever it's going to be. That's just my only personal thought. The other thing was, a Cape House is probably 3,400 square feet. Norwood's like Lubeck for the Fall River. It's a mill town, an old working town, and there was, we have 55% apartment units in Norwood. We have a high density, it's a small town. I just think that the people of Norwood, we're going to dig up all the streets and replace these pipes, and clean out, hopefully, the Meadowbrook, Osbrook, all these different contributors that go into this water coming off the stormwater that goes into the Nibbont Center, that's worked for a million years, but my contention is, first, we've got to start there. This is a huge project. This is why nobody's ever taken it up on this board, and I think Bill's been on the board for the longest time, can maybe say yes or no that way they haven't done it. This is a huge, we just had a huge tax bite, three years ago, a year this last past month. This is a huge tax bite for the seniors, the veterans, people that can't afford it. And you're digging up all these streets in Norwood, from 54-inch to 84-inch pipes, for what?
So, I think for the purposes of
No, I know, yeah.
We're just talking about the fee structure, because this is a lot of information to take in, we're not voting on anything this evening, appreciate your permission.
No, I know. I just want people out there at TV land to understand that they're going to hit with another fee, tax, and it's going to be because some people don't do the right thing, some people, like in my neighborhood, Ryan, Thompson, and Hamilton, we have it going down a retention basin, Big Y dumps it into the river. They've got probably 800,000 square feet up there, maybe a million, if I was to guess, but I just think that it's
Yeah.
For Norwood, it's a different way.
It's a good question, it is a good, good observation, Mr. Sad. I just think we also have to take into consideration the consequences of not funding this work at some level. You know, the history shows, has shown us that rainfall is increasing in the Northeast. I think it's been well documented by the engineers that Mr. Ryan works with, that the capacity of our system, it's old, it wasn't built to manage the storms, drainage storms, in a manner of the kind of storms that we're seeing these days. We know that, in fact, I think the original Meadowbrook report back in 2004 was initiated because we had a flooding at our old public safety building, and many of the things that that particular report cited, we're still looking at today, because we haven't really made a dent in a lot of that work. These things are hard, but infrastructure is important, and, you know, I think we've found, we've found ways of dealing with that. I mean, we're now halfway through a 45 million borrowing process for upgrading, getting ahead of the, accelerating our schedule of replacing our, relining our water pipes. We're coming into our last year where we had a borrowing process to spend $14 million over a five-year period to accelerate road paving construction. And we're doing those things because, you know, we haven't been paying appropriate attention to them in years past, and I just don't want stormwater to kind of fall into that same pattern that, because it's underground, and we don't see it, and it only causes real issues when we have massive rainstorms. I just think we need to keep our eye on this, because to do nothing has some pretty significant consequences as well.
Okay. Mr. Plasko?
All right, same here. But for the purpose of talking about fees, this was excellent information for the public to, in terms of future meetings, what are we thinking?
So, I'm going to give the board a memo, just on how we would take that, both outlining the process to move forward, but also just how we operationalize and take the data that we have into how would it actually work on our budget, because the, moving to the budget that we would create, and my approach has been this, I think the board knows from the beginning, the focus really needs to be on the capital expenses and the infrastructure projects we have to get done and make this difference for the community.
Okay.
But there are some operating costs that come along with that, and there's some administrative costs. I mean, again, you're talking about creating a billing system and all that. Those will be relatively minor compared to looking at the overall cost, but I want to lay that out, and lay a financing plan out for the board that would sort of be okay as we move forward, not only here at the procedural steps, but here's how this would actually look. Some of the policy decisions the board will be looking at in terms of whether, you know, move forward, not move forward, but do we raise the fee a certain level over four or five years, or do you start at where you know your expenses need to be to provide stability? I would rather the fee start higher and be stable than have to continue to go up, you know, year after year, or month, year, month after month, just to provide some stability. I'd rather tell people, this is what the fee is, and it's going to be around this, or only need small adjustments going forward, rather than, don't worry, just three bucks a month to start, but then next year, it's six months, and then the year after, it's nine months. I'd rather say, look, if this is what we need to, let's, you know, let's be honest, this is what we need to raise, this is what the fee needs to be, and let's do it in a way that we can have stability in the fee. But that's more on how we operationalize it, once we've decided we're moving forward. Just to the historic precedent of it, we haven't been talking about this for five years, just because of the Norwood, the hospital flood. We haven't been talking about it for 20 years, just because we lost the public safety building. We can go back 40 or 50 years, where we've had flooding problems and we've been talking about it. And to Mr. Sad's point, it's been difficult to address, because it's expensive. There was only a mechanism developed in the last decade or so to do it. Does it suck to hit the taxpayer for another charge that's a tax by any name? Of course it does, but. Of course it does, but to your point earlier about your opposition to 3A, do the selectmen want to be leaders and do we want to bring forward what the community needs and have to fight the good fight? We know what happens when it rains. We know we can't handle that as it is now, and that's really the policy decision is bury the head or address a problem as unpopular as it is. I wish I could always bring you guys popular policy solutions that were, here's a great idea where you can lower everyone's taxes and fees. Believe me, I wish I could, but sometimes the decisions that we make are difficult and they're unfortunate. We try to find ways to take care of those who can't afford it, but sometimes doing the right thing for the community means doing the hard thing for the community too.
In terms of information that is already out there that the public can access?
There is a, a page on the website from the Stormwater Utility where people can access, and, and not only just view our minutes, but many of our reports, the report that was submitted to the selectmen last year, so that exists. There is also a document called Frequently Asked Questions that's also available on that website that answers a lot of the questions that have come up through the public meetings. We've had, Mr. Hopcroft will verify this as well, that we've had several public meetings for information sharing and for questions and answered, and from that we've, we've put together a Q and A that people can access. Mr. Chair, if I may, I also should, it would be remiss if I didn't also recognize Mr. Hopcroft and his role as Chair of the Utility Committee. He's done a wonderful job. And committee members, in addition to Mr. Hopcroft, have been Alan Slater, and Heather Arnett, and myself as citizens. We've been well supported by Mr. Ryan, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Rosen as well, so thank you.
And Holly Jones as well.
Holly Jones, yes, Ms. Jones, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Jones, can I just add something I think we missed here? When we look at neighboring communities, one of the key elements that we find is, there needs to be some mechanism to deal with hardships. There also is not uncommonly a mechanism for reducing the, even the individual homeowner, ERU, by taking positive steps defined in the neighboring bylaw regulations, whatever, so that someone can ensure that all of the runoff from their property is contained and they can reduce their fee by some significant amount. So I think that needs to be thought about when you start going forward with these issues going forward.
Just that point, the pro forma budget that I'll get to the board includes, allows the score maintenance exemption and a couple other items.
And the last item is that there is a, on the website, there is a place for people who have questions regarding this issue to pose the question. When that happens, Mr. Rosen will send it to me, and I'll find the right person to answer it, and we'll be able to add that to our Q and As as well as answer directly.
Great. That was important to mention, so thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. Anything else, Mr. Ridge, Mr. Ryan? Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll see you again, I am sure.
I won't find you.
Okay. Okay. I feel like we need a timeout. We were talking about Article 4, Mr. Sad made some points, Mr. Plasko made some points.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Donnelly.
So, yeah, if I may speak on it as well.
Certainly.
So I did make the motion for, for board support of this, and I just want to kind of recap my thoughts, and if the board will indulge me, I'm dealing with a bronchial issue that been making, getting my full sentences out kind of difficult lately, but I've made some notes and observations regarding the, the bylaw that I, that I did want to just lay out and to just, to further provide information of why I support this. So, you know, the, the, nobody likes a mandate, and certainly this is a state mandate to, from municipalities to put together bylaws that address this issue. It is founded in some pretty important economic research and, and data that I think is out there that addresses why there is a need to do this. There is a regional lack of housing, and this law is intending to address that. You know, the state will, will certainly provide a lot of information regarding our labor force development, our labor force needs going into the future, and there's a lot of information, a lot of information out there regarding that we don't have the housing that can accommodate the growth in labor that we, that we anticipate that our industrial base can support. And in addition to that, because it's a supply issue, we have a pricing issue as well. So those labor force, those industries that want to locate here to grow are facing an issue of not being able to find housing number one that can accommodate the growth in labor force, but that's affordable. So when we see that happen, you know, we, we pride ourselves on our industries, our biotech, our healthcare, our, our educational. There are states out there who can do it more effectively than us, than us in many ways. I'm just reading an article, I think, two weeks in the Boston Globe about the Research Triangle in North Carolina, beginning to, to develop their, their recruitment of similar industries to us to locate in North Carolina. And housing is less of an issue there than it is here in the Northeast. So if we do not address this regional issue, it's not just a Norwood issue, this is an issue for the state and the Northeast region in general. We, I think we're taking a look at companies looking elsewhere to establish the facilities and grow those industries that are so important to our, our economic well-being here in Massachusetts and beyond. Housing is like any other commodity, it is subject to the economic rules of supply and demand. When, when supply is, is scarce and demand is high, prices are going to rise, and we've seen that to an extraordinary extent here in the Northeast. So, you know, and, and certainly when, looking at some of the information from, from other sources, including the state and, and our own information from coming out of the 3A committee, it's estimated that many residents here and, and other parts of the state are spending well over 30% of their income just on housing. So there is an issue that needs to be addressed. You may not like the method that's being employed, but there is an issue that exists that we need to address. I agree with Mr. Plasko regarding the compliance. I have heard some people say that we ought to go back to the legislature and, and demand a change in the law, and, and, you know, this legislation passed in the Senate and the House by a vote of 183 to 4. There's very little chance that, and, and that shows that the, the House and the Senate were supportive of this legislation because of the end goals that it is aspiring to, to correct. And non-compliance, as we have seen, Governor Baker and Governor Healy have both supported this, this particular law. We've seen in the case of Milton that they've already lost access to state grants. There are a number of others that the state could impose on them, and I believe the, the law actually cites the ability of the state to even increase the, the access a community would have to further state grants and funding. So it's a very dangerous thing to thumb your nose at the state and say that we're, we're just not going to, to do this. And I don't really think Milton's going to end up doing that either. I think ultimately their, their work's something that will, will comply. This morning, we know that the Attorney General has formally initiated a suit against Milton. I don't think a municipality wants to be in these kind of positions where we're fighting the state, and hopefully Milton and the state will resolve. The plan that we have before us at town meeting does comply with the law, pretty certain that it will. There are a number of redevelopment and benefits to redevelopment that, that will result from the plan that's being presented at town meeting. I believe that the proposed bylaw will lead to redevelopment of older industrial parcels that are included in, in the bylaw. These are parcels that are, I know that we have three potential developments that are proposal that, that could result and likely result in redevelopment. And these are parcels that could benefit from redevelopment. So I don't believe this is an issue of, of what, what I've heard some people refer to as urbanization, I believe it's an issue of redevelopment. Housing complexes on parcels that are vacant and underutilized do result in new structures that do contribute to the ability of the town to grow its tax base. We've heard a lot about the Plimpton Press property and how the, the controversy over the development of the Avalon complex years ago. It's there now, it's there, it's been there for several years. That complex alone generates over 600,000 in real estate taxes to the town. It's far more revenue to the town than, than it, that it had contributed as an industrial property. Same could be said for 129 Giles Street. Both those properties are now generating more in tax revenues in, in properties and taxation than when they were classified previously as industrial and commercial. So I believe that the process used for the proposed bylaw was, was very good. It was committee that, that was set up. I think it actually mirrors a, a, I would call it like a, almost a mini master plan committee process, very data-driven, rigorous community outreach. I think that it provides for the achievement of the state mandate, and I believe that it also will, will economically be a benefit to our town. I don't believe that the, the mandate from the state does not result in 2,500 or 3,000 units being produced in Norwood. At the present time, these vacant lots or these lots that are in the zones that are now are home to underutilized properties will result in some development that I think will benefit the town. So I, I will stand in support of the, of the 3A bylaw as presented, and, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to bear with me through my, my loss of vocal cords in a moment or two. So, thank you.
Nope, it wasn't that bad. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Ms. Grow, I'm going to throw it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So from a high level, I am in favor of the language that's there. So at the end of the day, we've known for over a century that we needed to do something about the climate, and we sort of delayed and delayed and delayed and delayed, did nothing. And the entire time, all the climate scientists told us the consequences of doing nothing. And the consequence of doing nothing was getting in a place where we no longer have the luxury to live in, you know, single-family dwellings sprawling everywhere with services far away that you have to drive through, the least efficient way for humans to live. You actually want us to live close together, you want our services to be close together. If we cared so much about that lifestyle, maybe we shouldn't have burned all those fossil fuels. So for me, a initiative to try to get communities to be more close together is beneficial. I'm not worried about heights because right now people can't even tell how tall things are. I recall a town meeting going really in the weeds on heights when we were doing the overlay here in the downtown, and we had buildings that were already a whole story taller than the height that they were worried about, that had been happily sitting there for decades upon decades with no one noticing. You know, in terms of who's moving into the apartments, bringing kids, we already had that nationally, the talks about the rate at which kids are brought into a system by apartments. It's single families that bring in children, because when you're living in an apartment, you're still tending to establish your family, or in my case, a lot of the people I know that are going into Avalon and those types of locations, those are older residents that are trying to stay in the community because they need to downsize, because the house that they have lived their life in is no longer something that's going to work for them, it's not accessible. I know my house isn't accessible, I don't know about anybody else's. So right now, you're not going to stay in Norwood if you need accessibility, you can't afford it, and there's no building supply that will actually service you hardly. So we need things that are going to help bolster more accessible units so that our seniors can stay in, and they don't have to be sort of, you know, out of the community once they've reached a point where their single-family home is not appropriate anymore for them. But we just signed a pledge talking about how we're going to be looking towards, what can we do to become a more, you know, senior-friendly community, supportive of people as they want to age in their communities? Well, that's not going to happen if we don't make sure that there's things in place that zoning supports developers coming and reworking some of these old buildings that don't have any accessibility options. They're not going to do that on their own without something to provoke it. So I'm excited about this, you know, and I hear people kicking around, you know, different arguments about very specific parts of, of the proposal or how broad it is. But for me, you know, I've heard, you know, the same portion said to be, well, we can't change this part because there's too much traffic. Well, but if we change it this way for mixed use, there won't be enough people to keep, so which is it? Those are, those are opposite things. You can't have so much traffic that it's insurmountable yet, none of that traffic's going to provide enough people to support said mixed-use businesses? So it can't be both ways, it's either the one or the other, and we need to decide which one is important to us. But those are all things that can be hashed out. And the other thing is, I get a lot of feedback from people about parcels where they're not even in that district. Like some of them that are being debated, I literally drive, walk, skateboard, and go with friends up and down, up and down that road, like multiple times per week, sometimes multiple times per day, and I hear a lot of feedback about how it is and this and that. I'm like, I'm there on the ground seeing it, and I would welcome changes to that section. You know, what, in what universe do we want hardcore manufacturing with solvent plants and big slabs of granite across the street from a single-family home? You know, I'm walking my dog and I see people's pets, you know, trying to dart out from under the semi-trucks that are delivering materials back and forth. And we know that commercial delivery definitely does wear and tear on our roads because we have commercial companies that pay us a nice little donation for the wear and tear that's generated by their business existing. So all of these factors for me are adding up to, I liked that the planning, and I liked that the community were thinking about, look, let's not just do the bare minimum viable, and then let's get peppered with tiffs and, you know, lips and everything else, one by one, and people asking for special permits on every single little parcel where we wait to decide what we're doing. Let's pick some of the really obvious sections where we're pretty confident already, just basic logic would dictate, this is probably the direction that a master planning committee would go anyway. This is what our professional data has about how these sections of town would work long-term. And let's start with those and just set the ground rules, like, look, this is how we want this part of town moving, progressing forward. And then master planning will continue, obviously, but we're out of time, right? We're out of time, water is here, we've got to deal with it. You know, we just saw presentations about this, right? If we get development in some of the spots, we're actually going to gain green space where we don't have it now because it's a manufacturing place that's wall-to-wall asphalt. So for me, I'm in favor of it, I'm fine, you know, the community will come and will have different discussions about minutia about it, but in terms of us as a board, I'm in favor of us taking a position to support it, let the body then deliberate on it, right? But we want to comply, not just because we're having our arm twisted, but because it's what's great for Norwood. And people talk about the character of Norwood, but I've lived in communities bigger than Norwood, smaller than Norwood, taller buildings than Norwood, shorter buildings than Norwood, and none of them had Norwood's character, because Norwood's character isn't its buildings, and it isn't how many people are here. The character of Norwood is made of its community, and that is something that hasn't changed just because of buildings or, or population. That's something that we have laid the groundwork here from generations of Norwood. Like, I got to this town, and within a week, I was like, this is where I want to stay. And it wasn't because it was small, or it wasn't because it was, you know, looking a certain way. It was the community, it was the amenities, the amenities that are fueled by that community. Right now, we're barely able to keep the people that run our services in our town, they can't afford to live here. How are we going to have a light department that we own and operate, yet none of the people that work on it can afford to live here to help run it? And so for me, I'm in support of this language as it is. I welcome people to discuss very particular components of it, but I think as a board, we should show leadership, because Norwood always shows leadership. And so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Grow. You never asked Mr. Plasko to skateboard with you?
It's coming, it's coming. I'll get you some extra pads.
Yeah, I, you know, a lot of things being said, a lot of points being made for, against, maybe neutral, you know, a lot of things, all my Mr. Sad. You know, in, in terms of how I, I was on the task force committee, I recommended the language used, so, you know, I'm obviously in support of it. I think for the sake of this evening, this is where I might lean on you a little bit, Mr. Plasko, in terms of, you have specific things within these two articles in the details.
Go on the details up.
But in terms of, I'm not asking you to predict the future or to sort of talk about your strategy, but is it more efficient to say, bring those forward at town meeting or to discuss them now, make, propose amendments now to these articles? Because I think either way, it's, it's a lie.
Well, I think it has to happen at town meeting, unfortunately. Well, I think the, has to happen at town meeting, unfortunately. We, in my opinion, haven't really had a community. We had a group and everything, but then it gets to the community, and we went right from the community to close the doors. The bylaw was presented, which would be something to talk about and get input on, get the neighborhoods, get everybody involved, everybody in town that thinks they have an opinion on it, and digest it, and see if there should be amendments to it, and if so, what they are. And we could do that. Unfortunately...
At town meetings, you're saying?
Huh?
At town meetings.
Yeah. Well, it would've been through the planning board, but unfortunately, they closed the hearing, and never even discussed the bylaw itself, just the concept, the principle, some of the things we've talked about tonight. But again, not the devil's in the detail, so that hasn't happened. So if any of those things are gonna be brought forward, it's gonna make a long draw, drawn-out kind of town meeting. It's tough to do a town meeting, but that would be the place where, yes.
Okay. So, you know, in terms of the discussion tonight, to support, to not support, I would assume Mr. Sad, that you would not vote to support. I think you've made it clear. It seems, Mr. Plasko, perhaps you would not vote to support because of...
Right. A vote of the board's position on this, as I state, and would state publicly over and over again. I'm not opposed to the fact that we're gonna...
Right.
Going to accept that this mandate's there and deal with it, and deal the best we can, and get something done. I just disagree, as we said, the devil in the details, that this is the best vehicle to do that. And would like to see changes to accomplish that. So we want to accomplish the same goal, but in a far different way.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ms. Grow. I'm sorry, Mr. Ed.
Okay.
Go ahead, go.
Mine isn't on the topic of specific arguments about the article. This was just something that I thought of, that we may want to talk about far in advance of town meeting, which is, might it be wise for us to have counsel available that has specific expertise on this type of topic, so that if we get in a position where people are trying to make, you know, certain changes or motions around it, that we don't end up in situations that we have another times where we've made a change on the fly, and then it turns around, and maybe now we're gonna have counter suits and da-da-da, like, that we want. It's such a detailed topic with so many parts, that many people have suggestions about changing, that do we want to have an extra layer of protection to sort of mitigate liability or complexity by having that expertise available?
Counsel will be there at town meeting to review, whether it's Dave DeLuca, or Hiye, or Ms. North. They generally act in land use. I mean, any motion that comes forward to change would have. Hopefully, if somebody had one, and they knew they were gonna suggest one, the earlier they can have that available, we can try to at least vet that. Again, it's not necessarily our role to approve or disapprove a town meeting member coming forward with a recommendation, but if people were to know, we're always willing to help people, to a certain degree, make sure that something might be in proper form, or we can't give them, you know, advice. It might be as simple as, at the meeting, we may have to take some pauses. I know we don't seem to like to do that, but there's nothing wrong with a town meeting saying, we're gonna take a pause for three minutes, take a quick bathroom break, let town council review a written proposal, change it to make sure something's in proper form. So that's a specific question, just in a slightly broader sense. The board is tied voting on your support of the yellow sheet. The warrant article is going forward to town meeting.
Right. Essentially, that's what I was asking, in terms of...
Oh, yeah, the article, we closed the warrant. That's there.
Right.
Can I think, Mr. Chair, that perhaps if, you know, I don't know how much longer we can, we can have back and forth. I think we've all addressed our various positions, and arguments for and against have been well articulated. You know, we have a motion to support, whatever the outcome of that motion is, we need to add it to the yellow pages, in terms of, yellow sheets, rather, in terms of the verbiage at the end of the articles. Each of these will, should record, or should notify the recipients of the yellow sheets that this vote of support was taken by the board on X date, and either it failed, or it got support by whatever vote there is. I think that's, am I incorrect in thinking that's where it is? We are at this point in time?
Correct. Yes. Mr. Plasko.
If I could just please say one more thing. There was some comment earlier about the numbers being thrown about, and I just want to say for the record, that the numbers that I'm using are from our community development department. They're not my numbers, they're not made-up numbers. They're factual numbers. And my concern is, in part of the whole discussion, in community discussion or lack thereof, we're not talking about numbers or nothing.
Yeah. If that, if I implied somehow, that, I didn't want to say that anyone's numbers were invalid, I just meant that there was, there were a lot of numbers being discussed. I didn't mean that personally.
I don't think you were making a personal swipe, but if anybody's watching, I want them to know.
I would add that one. One would challenge Mr. Plasko on numbers at their own peril, so, you understand.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things, just to close it up, I guess, 'cause I know where it's going, but I asked John Rogers and Mike Rush, right there sitting, I was against it, they said they didn't read the bill.
All right.
It just doesn't make sense that we haven't got the school committee to tell us how many kids might be potentially in the schools. The FinCom, how much, if we hire another police officer, or another fireperson? The school, they can't handle this load. We have people on Route 1 that's gonna be going to the Norwood schools. There might be an extra 80 kids next season. We don't know that. But I just think that we're rushing into too many variables, where this is a huge project. If an old mill wants to go and get a variance from the Board of Appeals, they have every right to go in there over the last 50 years. We have zoning laws, we've worked hard over these years to have them, and for somebody to come in from the state and tell us how to have it, Savagrant's, the building, the owners there, chomping at the bits to have a five or six-story building there, and it's just, I think it should go to the town vote.
That's what's gonna happen.
I think it should be a town vote for this and that.
A town meeting vote.
No, town, town vote.
No, I don't, I don't believe that...
I think we should have a town vote and let the people vote, because this is huge.
Well, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Well, no, I'm just throwing it out there for the people in TV land. It just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
All right.
We're clear on your position?
Thank you.
You know, I'm sure at town meeting, you'll be given the opportunity to speak as an individual. Right now, we're voting as a board. I'm sort of reserving my opinion for town meeting, because I think that that, it would be better served there, and it's almost nine o'clock this evening, and I'm sure Christine does not want to stay all evening. But again, and I think I've said this before, I appreciate the stability with which that we're talking about this, you know, regardless of where you fall. But, yeah, so let's get back to the article. Mr. Donnelly had made a motion to support. Ms. Grow, can I assume you would second that motion? Or had you already?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I will poll individually. So the motion to, what's the best way to word this, Mr. Plasko? I'm sorry. I haven't eaten, so come on.
He's gonna do the yellow sheet, he's just at the end gonna put how the board voted, whether he voted to support or not, or the table, like, on the other one.
So it can be simple.
Whether we vote three to two, whatever it's gonna be.
Okay. The motion on the floor is for, Mr. Donnelly, made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow, to support Article 4, the new zoning overlay district, to be named MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD. Mr. Sad?
No.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The vote is three to two.
Just for Article 5, the zoning map, we could just include a line that the board's opinion, similar to the article above.
Okay. Mr. Plasko, I think you have...
I was just gonna ask if the board would entertain, and you don't have to, obviously, but I'm gonna ask anyhow. Under dimensional requirements, as I was making reference to earlier, the paragraph that says knowledge propose, proposal achieves the required unit capacity by spreading the required unit density across a larger area, that that paragraph be stricken, help from the yellow sheet.
Okay. Just, if you don't mind, just give me a second to read that again. You're reading this from Article...
This is in the dimensional requirements.
On the yellow sheet.
Yeah. Oh, I was looking in the wrong place. Okay. Could you repeat that, Mr. Plasko? I'm sorry.
That, that paragraph, I think is, I'm not saying anyone again did it intentionally or anything, but I think, based on the facts of the numbers, and what potentially could be developed under this bylaw, that, that just is a misleading statement, it's just not true. We didn't have to get, spread the acreage out to get the, to meet the mandate, to get the units. We could do it a lot easier, as I said. We could do it just with Windsor Gardens and one other little area. But we could even do it with Windsor Gardens alone, if we just let Windsor Gardens be a little more dense. Yeah.
I think it's 47 acres, right? Windsor Gardens? Yeah. So you're saying the first sentence of that paragraph, so...
I take the whole paragraph, but the first sentence is probably the most of it. Because it says additionally after that, you'd have to at least take out that word.
I have a question about your motion.
Okay.
In the lang, like, for the...
Do we need a second to this?
Yeah. Do we need a second to this?
Second, Ms. Sad. On the motion.
On the motion, that language, when it's discussing, you know, here's the impact, we're trying to spread it, right? My impression is that, you know, suppose that this is how it was supposed to be shaped, but what we're trying to do is shape it like that. You're saying that somewhere in the language, there are things that are basically saying it's like this, where we were trying to cut down on heights and such by spreading it out.
There could, there, how do I want to say this? There could have been a situation, and there isn't, some, a lot of towns, where to meet the mandate, they had to go beyond the minimum 50 acres.
Right. Yeah, because they had...
But we didn't have to. Because Windsor Gardens, they said, is only 81 units short, so we could, and it's 46 acres. So we could go to, we could go to the depot, which is 40, which is five acres, and approximately 260 units, 230 units, potential to be built there, immediately about acres.
I understand the point. I have a further question about it, which is...
So you don't, you don't need to get the 78 acres. There may not be any harm if you think those areas should be included, but they weren't needed to, they weren't needed to achieve.
Yeah. Did we think that the community, where that one location was, if you were gonna concentrate that density all in one spot, that that community would've been okay?
Well, one, I'll just interject real quick. You know, as a task force member, that was one of the first things that we talked about. We understood that, hey, we could meet most of this if we just, you know, designated this one area. We decided as group to not do that, to, so...
Well, you only miss by anyone.
But, that doesn't, so, you know, from the beginning, that was not the path we were taking. We understood that we could've. I'm not sure what the outcome would've been if we had done that, but regardless, you know, so...
But just a blind statement, isn't it?
I understand what your point is. I don't have a particular problem with striking that paragraph. I don't, I don't think it's...
No, I think Mr. Plasko's point is, it could lead somebody to believe that, okay, to get to the number, we intentionally went ahead and spread it out. We didn't. I mean, we had a, we had a...
And I would be happy to talk about that at town meeting, about sort of...
There might be other reasons that that could be explained, but not to achieve the mandate.
Yep. No, no, I think that makes sense.
Because we're at 78 acres versus just the 50.
Yep. That, okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Ms. Grow, to strike...
I actually think Mr. Sad...
Oh, Ms. Sad, I'm sorry. To strike the third paragraph below the dimensional requirements...
Begins with knowledge proposal.
And ends with building code.
Correct.
Okay. Let's just poll individually on the motion, Mr. Sad.
Yes.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. So we'll make that change. Mr. Mizuko? Great. Back to Article 5.
Do one, you do the other.
I figured we'd go ahead. Article 5, do we have a motion?
Motion to support Article 5.
Motion to support Article 5, an amendment of the official zoning map by creating the MCMOD made by Mr. Donnelly, I'm gonna say, seconded by Ms. Grow. She's a wild guess there. Mr. Sad?
No.
Ms. Grow?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
No.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The vote is three to two. Okay. Take a quick breath.
We talked Article 6 earlier, all right?
Did, yeah.
Seems like a long time ago.
Almost as long as I've been here.
Okay.
4.1.
Anything of note? Did anyone...
Saw your letter, Mr. Chan.
So I will, I will, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
I think, just, Mr. Donnelly, with my assistance, we drafted a letter, and with, I guess we should maybe take a vote, just to send, officially send? Is that...
I'll make a motion that, that the letter as drafted be sent to Governor Mar Healy regarding Stewart Hospital, Norwood Hospital.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Yes.
The only other thing I was gonna ask about that letter is, are we happy with this specific action that we're wanting the governor to take? Because we're talking about the problems we're experiencing, but do we feel like we've properly expressed, and we specifically want you to, do we feel like we've covered what we wanted?
I, I think the, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I think the intent was, it's on the news about Stewart and the, and the nine facilities. I think the intent here is that we're, we're a little unique in Norwood, in that everything else is built and operating today in Stewart. The intent of this letter is just to draw the attention specifically to the governor that ours is different. Yes, we're part of the Stewart network, but we don't have a hospital. It's unbuilt. The commitment to build it is now in question, and, you know, my recommendation, it's just to raise awareness, and it's not just us. The letter references the other major, the other neighboring towns that also have lost the services of Norwood Hospital, including Canton, Sharon...
Walpo.
Walpo. So we may want to just send this letter to those communities as well, just to advise them what we're doing, because they're in the same boat that we are. So it's more of raising the awareness, and that just make the chief, that the governor keep our situation front of center when, when whatever the outcome of Norwood Hospital is, that she's aware of the impact to the community, and we're bringing that to our attention.
And that was my follow-up to that. If we feel like the letter says everything, and asks for everything that we want to say, that there are other communities that we name, and that we may want to directly reach out to those communities, that Mr. Donnelly mentioned, provide a copy of what we're planning to send, because that will further draw the attention that's needed.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, and I think the impetus for sending this, as Mr. Allen said, is, you know, that we do feel like it's a little bit of a different scenario than these other hospitals. You hear, you know, in the TV, or Boston Globe, and they're talking about, the governor wants someone to, you know, one steward out of Massachusetts. Well, all those other hospitals are in motion, ours has been sitting there, you know, and so I do think we're in a little bit of a different situation. I will say very quickly, you know, I did, I received a phone call today from Representative Rogers and Senator Rush, and, you know, I just, they made it clear that there are a lot of conversations at the state level. Hopefully, they have an update for us soon on the, sort of, the buttoning up of the site, because as Chief Brooks had mentioned in here, that, you know, leaving a site like that, open to the weather, but also open to people, and, you know, if someone wanted to climb that fence, I'm sure they could figure out how to do it, and that's not a good situation for anyone. So they had said, as soon as they have information, you know, they're more than willing to share it, and they certainly have an open invite to come and sit and present if they have further information. But I reiterated our position as a board, is that, you know, unfortunately, Stewart has not communicated with us, and I don't think they've communicated with Mr. Mizuko. You know, we've asked them for certain things, we've invited them to meetings more than once, and so, and now, I think it's really, sort of, it's in the papers every day. And so hopefully, that gets a little motivation for them to do something, so. But I think we're all anxiously awaiting, so we appreciate the opportunity to send that letter.
Bringing that particular item to the attention of the governor puts another urgency, if the office of the governor is helpful to us in ensuring that what is built is protected, and not just left to decay, and to fall into the elements, I think that's important as well.
Good. All right.
So, make a motion to, oh, did you take a vote on it?
Yeah, the motion was made in acceptance.
Yeah, a motion to acceptance, and this letter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous, great, okay.
Motion to file for one, through four, five, and four point seven.
Motion to file items 4.1 through 4.5, and item 4.7, made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Managers update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it brief. We expect Whole Market Foods to be back operational sometime tomorrow. They've been down for better part of a week and a half due to some safety issues, and some fires and other issues they've had. We lifted the cease and desists, I believe, today, so they should be operational tomorrow.
Great.
And I'll keep it at that for now.
Okay. And thank you for being here, I know you were under the weather, and you took a vacation, but you didn't really get one, so.
Yeah, I decided that, I'm just an efficiency expert, if you get sick and get a virus when you're on vacation, you kill two birds with one stone, so.
There you go. Great. Okay, selectmen's, Mr. Sad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, I got a phone call, about four of them, on the trash again for President's Day. So I'm going to just tell them out there in TV land, just put it out, don't even consider any, on the holidays, just put it on the-
We only delay trash, I think, two days a year.
Three times, Bill said that.
So it's, it's the normal tribute to put it out.
Yep. And I did get a phone call, there was no trash pickup, on a certain week before, two weeks. But that's fine. On Willow and Lennox, the gas company's digging up that street for our new mains. Where are the mains going?
I'm not sure I understand the question, on the street?
No, I know that, but where they, where they going to?
So the National Grid periodically replaces all of their lines, based on a schedule of when, either A, if there's a problem, or B, if they think they're, it just comes up time that they need to get replaced.
Yeah, because I think they-
So I think we can do it specifically, but-
Yeah, I think they did it three years ago, but I don't know where they're going with them, Savagrand. The other thing is, congratulations to the wrestling team, the teams that are in the playoffs. Finish strong, and win, and we're all proud of you here in Norwood. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sad.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you had mentioned maybe doing something for-
Wrestling next couple of weeks.
Okay, yeah, so let's figure that out, and we'll do that, that would be great.
Yep, and any other team.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Ms. Grow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for tonight, what I have is just a reminder for everybody that it is election time for primaries, for the federal primaries, so that is-
I saw your sandwich boards, not yours.
Yep, the sandwich boards, yeah.
Not yours.
Yes, not mine personally, but Legum voters obviously put out more reminders, we're hoping that this will help remind people, because it's so easy to just, you know, you get in your daily routine, driving, and then you're like, oh my gosh, you know, it's past, you know, when I can make it to the polls. So we're hoping that putting up the little signs in more places in town will help remind folks, a little mnemonic. And also, big thank you to Mr. Ryan for helping to make sure that the signs will be secure for, say, like, wind and such.
Great.
But, you know, just a reminder, it is important to vote, even if you're not feeling, not feeling it, it is still always worth it. There is somebody you can always vote for, no matter what, in any race, and that's yourself. If you can't believe in yourself, who else can you believe in? But by participating, by showing, you know, if you're not in favor of whoever's there, by putting your name and not putting, say, joke names and such, then that sends the message of, you know, this, I was here, I participated seriously, and, you know, this is what I think about that, instead of the conjecture of, oh, maybe they would have made it if the times were different, or, oh, maybe they'd like transportation, it just, it really solves that. So it is always, always, always worth it to vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. I think I'll start, if I have, Mr. Chairman, with a moment of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Tonight is my wife and I's 54th wedding anniversary.
Wow.
And Kathy, I just want you to know that you're the most beautiful thing I've seen in my entire life. I love you so much. You've been so kind to me, so supportive, so loving, and so helpful, that it's just beyond words. The family you've given me and nurtured, it's just a gift beyond words. And I just want to thank you for being there all these years with me and for me. Mr. Chairman, Talent Bank, we think we've mentioned a couple of times that it's kind outdated, and maybe we should take a hard look at it. We're coming into the spring, where we're going to be doing the annual report, that's where it's housed. Maybe we want to find another way to reach out even more than that. But for that purpose, can you maybe grab one of your staff and see if we can clear that up, update that a little bit, and when we print the new, annual report, have it more nice?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good time of year to take a look at it every year. I know, sorry, good. I was just saying, you know, we have this challenge where sometimes somebody sends a recommendation in, when they're, you know, spots available, and they're interested in a committee, and we have the Talent Bank, and we could grab all the applications that have checked that box over the last six months or 12 months, and get them with every application. But as we said earlier, sometimes they go, they go stale, so there's no, there's no perfect system. And then we also have a case where, you know, out of, let's say, there's 20 names, and there are 18 of them have checked off something really interesting, and, you know, nobody's checked off the committees we end up having a space for. And we're generally in good shape, but we can, we can update it, and we can look at making sure when there's a recommendation for a new appointment, that we get them there, as opposed to maybe just a reappointment, we'll get the list of everything that's coming. Or we can even just check ahead of time, if they're still interested, you know, do they want us to forward their name to the board?
Thank you. And similar to that, the webpage once in a while, such as List Committees, Permanent Building Construction Committee, we've done away with that, maybe we should update that. I don't know if there's any others, but things like that should be removed and updated.
There probably are. It's always sort of a battle back and forth between trying to make every department responsible for their own content, and reminding them to constantly check it, versus just my-
Nobody could watch that one, or one like that, though.
Yeah, that's true.
That's why the role webmaster exists.
What's that?
That's why the role webmaster exists.
Yeah.
That's it tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Very nice thing to say. Made us look bad, but it's okay.
Fifty-four years.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, congratulations, Bill, to you and Kathy. As you were finishing up your remarks, I was beginning to feel like maybe the person who had to give a speech after the Gettysburg Address speech. But that's a really great story. I just, two quick updates, Mr. Chair, if you will. So just a note of thanks to all the volunteers and organizations that helped make our short winter concert series a success. We had our last concert last Sunday, it was well-attended.